To the January 3, 2023, meeting of the Springdale Planning Commission. I'd like this time to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, presented by Mr. Culver.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. While we come before you tonight, asking for wisdoms, we make decisions on behalf of the city of Springdale, Lord, we thank you for your guidance and your hand over our city, Lord. We ask for prayers for the mayor and his staff, the governor and her staff, Lord, and for the men and women of our armed forces. We ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Ray Cordell.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton. Roy Culver.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
Now entertaining a motion to approve the minutes for December 6, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Mueller.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, the minutes are approved. We'll move on to the public hearing rezonings, starting with R2276 Blue Ribbon Farms LLC, presented by Kraft and Toll and Associates.
You have to turn the mic on. There we go.
Is that got it working now?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Ellis with Kraft and Toll and Associates, and I'm here representing Blue Ribbon Industries with this rezon request. I think in general with what we've seen in the staff report, we don't have any objections to that. And this really, right now, there's not any specific plans for development. I know that the owner of the property is trying to explore his options on what is consistent with the C2 zoning. He has removed the trucking that was going on that property and any material storing, and has no intentions of bringing that back. So this is strictly kind of like the first steps of him trying to figure out what his plans are for this property in the future. And getting it rezoned would be the first step, and then figuring out what will work that will comply with the zoning ordinance for Springdale.
Staff comments?
Daniel, I have a question. How was the boundary selected for what was to be rezoned to C2?
When we started this process, the boundary was still based off of what was the trucking that was going on off of that property. He has, he has since actually gotten out of that business, sold the trucks, and is not planning on bringing that back. So I think if, if, you know, based off of the city recommendation of pulling that back away from to that one parcel line along Wagon Wheel, he would not object to that.
Okay. And is there a reason why it doesn't incorporate the property that already has a gravel on it to the north?
No, ma'am. Like I said, when we picked this boundary, this was just, it started out dealing with the trucking business. We're not even doing that now. And so this is just, you know, we're kind of just sticking with the plan that we've got on requesting this first rezone. I'm sure we'll be back with additional information as his plans develop, but right now, this is just where we're at.
Okay. I have one other question. How are we going to be able to identify out on the land itself where this boundary is?
We can go ahead and set stakes out there and identify where that's at.
Okay. Because that's going to be really important, because it's such an odd shape of the property to know where the commercial zone is, is to be placed if it is approved. Have you had any conversations with the RDOT on the improvements to 112 at this location and the roundabout that they're looking at?
Not, not specifically. We have, we have been to the public hearings that they had, and I'm sure as you're aware, Kraft and Toll is the one that's preparing the plans on Highway 112. So we're pretty comfortable with knowing what their plans are and what impact that will have on his future plans.
Okay. Okay. The comprehensive land use plan shows low density residential for this area. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the land use plan, but is in keeping with the following goals because of the scheduled improvements by RDOT to Highway 112. It is recommended that the C2 zoning on Wagon Wheel Road be limited to the eastern boundary of parcel 2100272-411. And what that does, it pulls it all the way back to that location where the other access point was. And that, that really limits its impact on Wagon Wheel itself. And we do want that the boundary of the C2 would need to be identified on the site so that we can make sure we all know what portion is commercial and what's remaining agricultural. Okay? Now, the Planning Commission received several emails and letters from adjacent property owners. We can read through all of those, or those all can be stipulated into the record. And let me just go over who all we have and see if we're missing any of them. In your packet was the one from Maxie Tomlinson, I believe. Blake Baldwin. Jason Ricks. Zach Pinalto. Mary Ruger. And Erin Rubel. And then Debbie, you handed out some more this evening. Additional ones from MB Horak and Sean Camp. And all of those will be entered into the record unless you guys want me to read each one of those. So if y'all had a chance to look at them and know what those statements. So we have those statements in the record, and now we can take public comment. Okay. Did you send an email to?
I did, and I sent it to a gentleman, and I can't say the name, but I wrote it to him and sent it out.
Okay. You sent it to one Planning Commission member or to, okay. Any one of the, you see the names on here? Okay.
It may have come to me, but I was out on the road.
Yeah, okay. These are the ones that were submitted directly to the planning office that we've received that were sent to the, to the Planning Commission members as well, most of them. Okay. And now we can open up for public comment if anybody has anything they want to say.
We're open to comments from the audience. Please go to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Sheri Metz. I'm at 12835 Wood Duck Lane, Creekside Estates, which is directly across the street from the proposed business. We've lived there for many, many years. We're not opposed to rezoning a neighborhood-friendly transitional commercial. However, with our experience, the representative for them had stated that they were going to just scrap the dump trucks. However, the documentation that I just got New Year's Eve said that it was, this hearing was for moving forward with dump trucks. So I hope I'm not speaking out of line in that regard. But the dump trucks were absolutely horrible, morning, noon, and night, with the, the noise and the disruption, the dump trucks going down Wager Road to the back, down Colonel Myers. The road has been destroyed. It's caving in. I've talked to the mayor of Cave Springs as well as Benton County, because apparently Wager Road is a county road, and nothing has been done to fix those issues. However, the roads are caving in and getting worse from the dump truck operation. We were just notified by accident, I think, New Year's Eve, and I tried to notify all of the neighbors that we have over at Creekside Estates. And unfortunately, I'm the, I think I'm the only one that's here because everybody's out of town for the holiday. But some of them have emailed. I was informed, I was told that we had to notify you by email prior to the 28th. So that's why I'm here, because I didn't think I could email. We're, we're certainly opposed to another dump truck operation, but we're not opposed to a commercial operation that is neighborhood-friendly transitional. I don't know what a C2 means in Springdale.
And I should have done this before. Let me go over what is allowed in a C2 zone. And as some of you have heard me say before, whatever you consider to be the worst-case scenario in a C2 zone, if that's acceptable, then it's acceptable to rezon it. Because once it's rezoned to C2, anything that's allowed in that zone can go in. Now, we have commercial design standards, we have landscaping requirements, we have screening requirements, and they would have to meet all of those standards in order to build something or have a commercial operation there. The permitted uses in a C2 zone is a citywide use by right, cultural recreational and health facilities, offices, studios, and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lots, temporary buildings, transportation services, healthcare clinic, and indoor flea market. The uses that are conditional on appeal to the Planning Commission would be citywide uses by conditional use, utilities, recycling collection facilities, self-supporting tower antenna, auction houses, temporary classrooms, automobile sales, church synagogue, mobile vending site, commercial assembly, free truck, and transitional housing. Anything that's listed as a conditional use has to come before the Planning Commission and the City Council, and conditions on how it can operate can be set. Any of the permitted uses are allowed with the submission of a large-scale development plan and the approval of that, as long as it meets one of those conditional uses. We are only talking about the highest and best use of the property today. We're not talking about drainage issues. We're not talking about streets or anything like that. That all is addressed with the large-scale development plan when it is, when one is submitted. Is there anything else like that?
Do you mind reading what can currently be done in an A1?
In an A1 zone now?
Current zoning.
Current zoning? Okay. Permitted uses in an A1 zone is citywide, public uses by right, agricultural uses, animal husbandry, single-family dwellings, and a home office, conditional uses on appeal in an A1 zone, citywide uses by conditional use permit, utility facilities, cultural recreation and health facilities, institutional facilities, zero-lot line, medium-density, single-family, affordable housing, eating places, commercial large lots, home occupation, recreational vehicle parks, self-supporting tower antenna, horses kept in residential areas, auction houses, temporary classrooms, church synagogue, healthcare, and agricultural occupation. Those are conditional uses on appeal. Okay? Okay.
Any other comments from the audience? Please go to the mic. State your name and address.
Hi, my name is Matt Wilkins. I live at 260 Brown Road, which is not directly adjacent to this, but I own the property directly to the north of this that I'm, I share whatever land border with. You know, over the last year, two years, we've been subjected to the land being used for things it wasn't, paid concerts, parking lots, all that. And what I heard that was just most disturbing to me is if we go C2, regardless of the stated intent of the property, it could be used for transportation services and a parking lot. And to me, allowing something that could potentially be used as transportation services or a parking lot that's all surrounded everywhere by agricultural property or small-scale residential as the plan amounts to spot zoning that really is somewhat of an unfair taking to those of us who have invested in areas based on that plan. And it's, and it's a far stretch to, in my opinion, allow something that could be transportation services, parking lots, and some of the other things that were mentioned, when you're, you're putting it, it's just an island of it where it doesn't already exist. And to me, that's just a, it's just, not necessarily that everything has to be fair, right? But it just doesn't seem like a good way to go about zoning when you're just creating an island around everybody else's interests. So.
Any other comments?
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. My name's Spencer Frazier. I live at 8886 Lebon V Drive here in Springdale. You can see it on the map. Been there almost 15 years now. Just one quick thing, love Springdale, love this particular valley as part of Springdale. It's a gorgeous part of town. And the things that I'm concerned about, I agree with the prior speaker 100%, but also do not believe that Blue Ribbon Industries or Farms or any of the other companies that they have owned previously are harmed as this, leading this as A1. I believe it was purchased as A1 with the intent to put a tree farm on it. That'd be fantastic. I think that'd be great. I think some of the things that we've seen out there over the course of time since the change of ownership, in addition to the expansion to the east, have just been atrocious. If you drive by there now, the land looks horrible. The degrading property needs to be repaired, in my opinion, back to its agricultural state, even with this particular change in mind. So I would just request that the commission keep this as A1 until we get a formal plan and a confirmed plan for what is expected to be in this C2 designation. Other than that, I think it's a wild card. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Okay. I absolutely oppose.
Can you pull the mic down so that you can get into it a little bit better? There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I absolutely oppose a C2 zoning for that property, any place on it.
Can you give us your name and address, please?
Maxie Tomlinson.
Okay.
9115 West Wagon Wheel Road, Springdale, Arkansas. Okay. Now, our problem is we don't know what you know about that area. It is, Blue Ribbon Farms is completely surrounded by homes in A1 properties, with the one exception being just north of us in Cave Springs, and those are R1s, which are residential, large lots. That, Blue Ribbon Farms is separated from Cave Springs by Spring Creek, the Spring Creek Bridge, and then a high bluff. And all along the bluff in Cave Springs are homes. To the east, I noticed that they had sent themselves a notice of this hearing. Blue Ribbon Farms had sent themselves as property that was undeveloped. But you actually have to go a little bit further east to get to the Lebon V subdivision, those homes, if you look at the map. And then if you come down to the south, there are homes, and then what the planning department has described as, area to the north, and then the area to the east is undeveloped. Well, it's undeveloped because it's Blue Ribbon Farms. If you go one step further, then you're in the residential neighborhood. The area to the south contains single-family dwellings and undeveloped areas. Well, that's me. I have nine acres. And I guess to be developed, you have to have a building. But what you're calling an undeveloped area, I call my yard. Then the area to the west is partially outside the city limits, that's true, that's partially Cave Springs, but those are homes as well. So you have to look at the map, the site plan, in order to see all the homes that completely surround Blue Ribbon Farms. If you, there is nothing about Highway 112 widening that will change that. The road will simply be wider, but it'll still be surrounded by homes. The fact that it's so open-ended with a C2, and we know that a C2 allows dump trucks, and those of us that lived in that valley with those dump trucks would describe that as a mechanized hog farm. So we do not want to leave open the possibility of something similar from Blue Ribbon Industries, because they have a number of departments, something they can't even say yet what they want to do with it. We cannot take that chance that they will do something that's equivalent to those dump trucks or swimming pool inserts, or who knows? So I implore you, just put it aside. 112 widening is not going to happen to us for 10 to 12 years. Do not put us in jeopardy of what we don't even know. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Oh, can we do, are you able to like take at least a count of the people that oppose? You know, a hand count or something? Is that allowed?
Sure. If anybody.
Okay. I would just ask everyone who opposes the C2 zoning, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments from the audience?
Good evening. Hey, Patsy, how you doing?
Good.
I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's David Gosveen. I live at 8995 West Wagon Wheel Road, also own the property at 9071 Wagon Wheel, 9075 Wagon Wheel, and 9053 Wagon Wheel. My property is across from Blue Ribbon. This thing in the get-go was supposed to be a nursery. That was my understanding. And for some reason, it's got twisted and turned, and the commercial end of it, I am totally against. Folks, I don't know, it's not necessarily the dump trucks, but I used to set my alarm clock. I go to work real early. I'm up at 5:00. And at 5:30, I was waking up by backup buzzers on equipment and tailgates on dump trucks banging at 5:30 in the morning. That's ludicrous in a residential area. And I would just ask that y'all please consider to leave this the zoning that it is previously right now. Don't zone it commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is John Herzic. I was involved with the development of Lebona B. And I guess my first question is, did the A1 zoning permit the use that it was being used for prior?
An A1 zone allows a Use Unit 6, which is agricultural, which includes landscape, horticultural, and plant nurseries. That's how they got the pumpkin patch and all that kind of stuff.
Did the, I would say there's at least probably 70 dump truck usage and what have you, does that fall within that realm?
Well, it started out, it was going to be just sifting of topsoil that was going to be stored on that site and located, which could be a landscaping function. I think it was a lot larger of a portion of that landscaping operation than we thought it's going to be.
And I guess that's my concern. It seems like we learn as the owner, I'm not even sure who the owner is exactly, other than Blue Ribbon Farms, I'm not sure who that is, is actually behind it, but we never seem to learn exactly what's going to be intended or done until it's already going on. And I'm thinking that happens outside of even what you guys are aware of. And so when we sit here and we're trying to decide whether or not it should be commercial, I guess the question is, is what exactly, I know that we heard prior to that Kraft and Toll representative said that we're just trying to find out the, what the owner's options are. But we give, I guess you give an inch, what is that mile? I don't know where it's going to end or what we're looking at here. And I do know that when we did the development, we were very careful not to infiltrate anywhere around the creek and to break any environmental rules and things like that. And that road that's showing up there, if you look at it now, if you were to get a current view of that satellite shot, that road is actually, they cleared off all the trees and the brush around that creek, which caused erosion, and that entire road is falling off into that creek now. And I guess there's just too much that seems out of control with the people that are involved with the development. And until we know a lot better about what the intentions are, to go ahead and just say, yeah, you got free access to a commercial zoning, that, that just seems crazy to me.
I can say that they were cited for several violations on that site, including operation of a trucking establishment without a business license and some environmental issues. We worked with the developer, trying to come up with a planned unit development of this so we'd know exactly what we were going to get. I mean, we can't force them into going that direction. They have the right to come and ask for this C2 zone, and the city has to make a determination whether it's in the city's best interest to let that happen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Step to the mic, please. State your name and address.
I just came in, so sorry if I repeat anything, but my name is Jared Spencer, and we live in the property just adjacent to where they are. In fact, our backyard backs into the property that they're developing. We have about three and a half acres for our home, and the back of our property kind of looks out toward what they've done. And I just wanted, I know we have this picture up there, but I don't know if it, does it justice for the, the land that it is. We've lived there for almost, since 2012, and, you know, I feel like this is some of the most beautiful land in northwest Arkansas. You know, for sure, Springdale, all this land west of the interstate, it goes right along Wagon Wheel, and Spring Creek goes in the back of all these properties all along there, and it's just beautiful. And so, you know, that's one reason we chose the area to be there. The Wagon Wheel itself, west of the interstate, is a really popular bike route for bikers from all over northwest Arkansas. And so it's kind of a showcase piece of property for Springdale, Arkansas. You know, I'm been a biker myself, and, you know, this is one of the areas that everybody loves to go to, to see Springdale, you know, in addition to Bentonville and some of those areas in Fayetteville. And this is just a beautiful, natural area. And so I think it's, it really deserves consideration to preserve it and, and do the best we can with this property. I know I don't own that property, but I feel like it's a big shame what I've seen happen just out my back window. I mean, it was a beautiful, kind of agricultural property where there was lots of deer. Now, it's, it's a combination of a wasteland with a gravel pit and a junkyard. Those are the three things of how I would describe it, and that's really what's been done. They've taken the dirt out, they've just left the gravel, so it looks terrible. They're storing swimming pool bottoms on it, just in a haphazard fashion. They have huge pipes and just construction debris all over the place. The land is churned up everywhere, and so you have some bodies where there's little pockets of water, or other bodies where it just seems like it's like a little flooding zone right now. And it is in a flood zone, so I'm not sure what they're, you know, the majority of the property is in a flood zone, so I don't know how it turns into commercial or even residential other than just kind of a natural landscape. But, and then it, of course, the dump trucks that aren't there now, but, you know, it was, you know, really, really difficult on Wagon Wheel, let alone the 112, to have all these dump trucks like coming and going the whole time. But it, it really, I feel like, has taken away from the scene. And I'm one property owner, you know, we have, you know, I'm kind of one of multiple around that area that's really put a lot into our properties. You know, I feel like, like our, our property itself, you know, there's multiple in this neighborhood that are kind of worth well over a million dollars, and it's, it's just because we've, you know, cultivated the land, you know, made it look really pretty, and it, and it looks, it looks really nice. So I, I do hope that's preserved. And so I will say, there really isn't any commercial property that I've seen along that entire West Wagon Wheel Road. So this would be a first, you know, commercial development in that entire area. So I don't see how it could be zoned for that. And then also, I feel like there's been a lot of damage done, you know? It really looks terrible right now. And so if they turned it into what they've turned it into, and that was against the code, I think they should be responsible to put it back to where it used to be, because it's really affected the property values, my property value, the enjoyment, you know, we have of the area, the bikers that access that area. And like I said, it's, it's a really prized area. I know Springdale's put a lot into the new Shaw Family Park. It's not too far from there, and that's a gorgeous park, use of land out there. And I see this area is kind of similar, kind of close by there. So my hope that it would remain agricultural, or even turn into maybe a nature preserve where there's some bike trails or walking trails. It's really beautiful enough to do that, too, kind of what I see Johnson doing for some of that area that they're developing down there. And so, again, appreciate letting my voice be heard, but I really do think it's a special area, and I hope we can preserve it as much as possible for all people in northwest Arkansas. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. My name is Lauren Gosveen. I also live at 8995 West Wagon Wheel Road. I own the property 9075 West Wagon, 9071, and 9053. Like what the gentleman said prior and many others, I've lived down that, out that way for 43 years, and it's been agriculture, and I know that progress comes. But like he said, if used appropriately, that could be a beautiful place to build where a lot of people could. where a lot of people could enjoy it. And it'd be nice, and would bring beauty to Springdale also. A nice place to say, hey, do you know about this place over on Wagon Wheel Road? That's what I was hoping for when they was gonna do the tree farm and do a few other things where it would be a place you really wanna go see, 'cause Springdale needs more of that than we do, uh, commercial. And to me, that wouldn't fit commercial, any kind of a commercial. The dump trucks was just like an odd thing to have in a place where this is at, 'cause it is beautiful. And to me, used in the right way, it could bring a better, for Springdale, a better, uh, name or a better place for people to go and wanna be there. Hey, do you know about Springdale? I've lived in Springdale all my life, and that's sixty-two years. And I love Springdale. And I wanted to make it be something where everybody can enjoy and not cause a lot of trauma or aggravation, you know, 'cause I raised my children there, and it was a nice peaceful, peaceful place. But what they was talking about doing, if they do commercial, I learned one thing, once you, like you said, once it goes C2, whatever goes on there, and I'd hate to see something on there that would just make a place ugly when a place has such potential. Yeah, I've seen it all through the years. It would be in a field with cattle running on it and being beautiful. And I'd love to see them put some in there that would benefit Springdale and benefit others and not cause its harm by putting in commercial stuff that, there's a lot of places you can do commercial on Highway one twelve. When they put that new highway in or whatever, they can do a lot of stuff somewhere else. But let's try to take, like he said, there's a lot of, there's springs. We have two springs on our property that runs off into over that property and everything. Beautiful things. I see the animals over the years, otters. I've seen the deer. I've seen all kinds of ducks, all kinds of fowl, all kinds of animals that have come from there. And I'd just like to see it used for a better thing and not to bring some kind of a commercial deal in there. Like I said, for my neighbors and us, they had the grinder with the, does the dirt and rocks. And in the summertime, we was trying to paint and couldn't even paint because the dust was so bad. But I'd like to see it used for good. And then when we, if you guys approve it being C2 and it could be anything, that's what worries me. Because anything can't be changed once it's done. And if we know history, once it's done, you can hardly go back and change it. So I wish and pray that you guys would really think about it hard before you make a C2, change it to that, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bring it to the commission. It'll be a call for the vote. Any questions from the commission? Call for vote, Mr. Culver.
Austin? Cardell? Cloud? Culver? Mueller? Parker? Tyler?
No. Pass, it fails. Seven zero.
You have the right to appeal to the city council of the planning commission's, uh, denial. You have to file that appeal within fifteen days. You have to identify why you think the planning's decision, uh, the planning commission's decision is an error, and you have to notify all the adjacent property owners again. Okay?
Uh, move on to R twenty-three oh one, Kevin and Kelly Clardy-Mastry. Presented by Kevin and Kelly Clardy-Mastry.
Hope this one's a little easier. We've got a piece of property, uh, one oh nine South Forty-Eighth Street that we recently purchased, right at the T of Harbor Avenue and Forty-Eighth. And, uh, it's a ranch-style house, twenty-eight-hundred square feet house, and the intention is to rezone it from A1 to O1. Uh, the plan is to use it for, uh, medical office. My wife's a counselor, and she wants to use it as a counseling office. And that's why we're here.
Staff comments?
The adopted land use plan indicates regional commercial use. Rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprees of Land Use Plan. Encourage the development of light to medium density commercial development along arterial streets that provide adequate setbacks and buffering to adjacent residential neighborhoods.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, call for the vote. Call for, Mr. Parker.
Cardell? Cloud? Culver? Mueller? Parker? Tyler? Austin?
Passes seven zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next is R twenty-three oh two, Daniel and Heather Douglas, presented by Allen Reed and Associates.
My name is Jessie Pettit. I work for Allen Reed and Associates. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Daniel and Heather Douglas has hired us to represent them on this rezoning request. Um, the property is currently zoned A1, and they would like to change that to SF2. Um, they have plans to build an additional home on the property. And, um, uh, currently, they can't do that, uh, under the current zoning.
Staff comments?
The Comprees of Land Use Plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. It's recommended for approval. At, assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size, stabilize property values, and maintain the integrity of neighborhoods by protecting neighborhood from non-residential influences and providing buffers between residential and non-residential uses.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote. Call for vote, Mr. Cloud.
Cloud? Culver? Mueller? Parker? Tyler? Austin? Cardell?
Rezoning passes seven zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-fourth.
Move on to R twenty-three oh three, Mill Creek Manor, um, and with a variance. Is that a variance? I like to, no, it's a large scale. Twenty-three oh one, so we'll do the rezoning first. All right. Presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. We are here making a request, uh, to change this from a C2.
Okay, can we make sure?
Sorry. Hello?
Okay, you may have to get closer to the mic. Can you guys turn the mic up a little bit? Okay.
Uh, we're, we're here requesting to modify the zone or change the zone from C2, C5 to MF twenty-four. And, uh, I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Well, I need to make a comment first. Okay, we'll, we'll let you make comments in just a minute. Okay? The land use plan indicates commercial and regional uses, commercial or regional uses for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals of policies. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale and allow an increase to medium or high-density residential when land values prevent economical development of low-density residential. Now, the property to the south of this is, is what the, the large scale is for, and it has that split zoning on it still?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The, the outpiece of that forty, yeah.
Okay. I wanna make sure, we weren't sure, it was, it's unusual that we would have that split on there, but the proposed use is, is acceptable of both zones, so it doesn't create a problem. Okay. We are ready for comments. Yeah, we're only talking about what's actually hashed on this to rezone it to MF twenty-four. Yeah.
Okay, now we'll take comments from the audience. Please state your name and address.
My name's Donna Johnson. I own property across the street, on Forty-Eighth Street, as well as my brother and my daughter. And then I live north of the property, up on a hill. And from my living room, I can see all the red clay pit that they have caused by just taking the hillside down. You know, I never dreamed ever that I would see a hill disappear. And I've tried to come to terms with it, thinking that, well, you know, when they get the nursing home there and, you know, it'll be all landscaped, it won't be too bad. But little did I realize how low they were gonna take that hill and the noise factor that has come with that. Because now from my house, I can see Fifty-Sixth Street that's on the other side of I forty-nine from us. The noise is deafening. And it's twenty-four-seven. It's I forty-nine roaring twenty-four-seven, and it's just gonna get worse with Fifty-Sixth Street being widened to four lanes, and then with the exchange, it's going to be going south of that. I'm curious to know, how low are they gonna take that? Can they truly take it as low as they want to, all the way flat to Forty-Eighth Street? Because we have lived on that property for years. I'm sixth generation in my family that owns that property. My daughter's seventh generation. She's right across from it. And it, just like with the Blue Ribbon stuff, it's heartbreaking to watch that. And I know that you can't stop progress. But Forty-Eighth Street, the traffic's already horrendous, just people cutting through there to get to Don Tyson. And to have those apartments there, I, I can't imagine what the traffic's gonna be, and plus, it's right there on that corner that is a pretty treacherous corner, really. The house that's just south of my daughter's has been hit two times by vehicles going around that corner. I don't know how people are gonna get in and out of the driveway safely. That's not really marked on here where the driveway would be. But it is just a heartbreaking thing for us. We are on the losing end no matter what, because we're not looking for a big paycheck when it all goes commercial and, and we get offered some money for it. I get calls every week, a call or a letter wanting to buy my property. We don't wanna sell it. It belonged to our family, and, and we, I just feel like we're gonna get forced out of an area that we've loved for years. And, uh, so I'm, I was really shocked by this MF twenty-four zoning. I see that it's already C2. I've learned a lot about C2 zoning today. I remember when they had that meeting at the very beginning, it was at the beginning of twenty-twenty or the middle of it. But it's when COVID was going on, there was a big concern with COVID. People had their mind on other issues. I know that I did. I should've come to the meeting. But it's for us just heartbreaking. They're all on the winning end. And I just feel like we're on the losing end. And, um, I would, I would like to see if they could possibly put a wall up of dirt that's tall enough, as tall as it was on the north end of their property, to help keep some of that sound out, because it's atrocious. And for them to be moving a natural sound barrier so, for, you know, some more dump trucks of dirt is shocking to me. I, I wish we could kind of live together on it. And, um, the traffic is going to be horrendous. We already have apartments south of us. There's a lot of traffic. They peel out and, you know, there's a lot of ambulances and, you know, fire department going down there whenever, I don't know what happens, but, um, anyway, it's just, um, it's a bit heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking for us. And I'd like for you to take that into consideration. If they could at least just say hello, is that gonna, is it gonna be all the way just flat to forty-nine?
Okay, we don't have a set of plans for this piece of property yet. We don't have a set of plans for how they're building apartments on that yet. That'll be the next step after this. The apartments weren't proposed with the assisted living facility that's there, so they'll have to come back with a large scale for that.
Okay.
And we have to address that whole issue of what the elevations are now.
All right.
Where we get to that, too.
Okay. I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? This guy would take it to the commission. Be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Cloud.
Culver? Mueller? Parker? Tyler? Austin? Cardell? Cloud?
Rezoning passes seven zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, we'll move on to the large-scale L twenty-three oh one. Presented by ESI.
So we're basically just requesting a reapproval of the same plan that was previously approved. Um, it's the same nursing facility, um, in that area. And then, you know, with, with the previous zoning request, hopefully, necessary use, um, to the, the, the nursing facility itself. Speak to the dirt and the movement of the dirt. There's, there's approximately two hundred thousand yards of material that has to come out of that location um, so that this facility can sit flat um, in its current location, currently approved location. So that's what we're trying to do. We had to cut that grade down to have a accessible drive into the property. But, uh, other than that, I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Before we get staff comments, I want, I wanna make a comment. When a large scale is approved, they get a grading permit, and they have a year to receive a building permit for footings and receive all permits and approvals from the city estate. This was approved in twenty-twenty. They did not come back and ask for any extensions. But they've been hauling dirt out on that same grading permit all this time, right? Katie? Okay. The ordinance also goes on to say that says, prior to expiration, an applicant may request the planning commission to extend the period to accomplish the task by up to one year. The applicant has the burden to show good cause why the task could not be reasonably completed within the normal time fame, time limit. Failure to meet the conditions of subsection F above after the second year will require submission of the development as a new submission. And I just don't see how we can just automatically approve the one that was there two years ago with this statement in the ordinance itself. And we need to verify that the elevations that they were brought, proposing to bring this down to is actually what has happened. Because they're still hauling dirt out of there. They were hauling dirt out of here last week. And so are, are we at this elevation? Are we close to it? We don't have any way of knowing until we go back and look through a large-scale development plan again, and with the ordinance saying, since they didn't ask for an extension, failure to it means it has to be resubmitted. And I don't feel like we got enough of the information back, and Ron, do you have some comments, or Sharon, which, okay. We have some comments that, that need to be addressed before, e- even if we look at, at, at just approving the, the one that was before, it's still got some issues besides the grade issues. The question is, do you guys want to waive that portion of the ordinance and just let the one that was previously submitted be approved without going back through the process, or since the ordinance says it has to be a new submission? And they were told that on the front end and chose to go this route rather than full submission.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You know, this was two years ago. Same code, same set of rules that was approved under, are still the same current guidelines. So we, we just felt like that this plan still meet, still meets the current standard. Um, and that's why we resubmitted it as the same large scale. That was previously, previously approved. We didn't anticipate four pages of comments, um, because it was already previously approved. That's, I guess that's my.
Well, I, I mean, the, the elevation issue is a big one. I don't know that, I, I mean, can you certify today that the elevations that are shown on this plat is what's out there? I mean, have y'all shot it to see?
They're not down to grade. I'm not shooting it intermittently as they go down. So they haven't, they haven't told me that they're pad-ready to me to come certify the pad. I mean, that's generally the, the operational procedure whenever it comes to, uh, dirt-moving operations, so, um, I mean, I can go verify it, or I can go shoot it, but I, I haven't, I have not done that to date, no.
Ron, you wanna go through the comments that you have?
Um, besides the normal standard comments, um, need to revisit the list of adjacent property owners certified. Notice all property, adjacent property owners must be sent by certified mail. Return receipt requested at time of resubmission. Evidence in the form of signed affidavit that notice has been given to all adjacent property owners by certified mail. Return receipt requested shall be submitted, and then please return the green cards. Need address of the developer shown on the, um, plan. Need like, land type needs to have an actual description. Need to pin all corners. Need state plan coordinates for all fire hydrant locations. Show the rate at which parking spaces were calculated for each use. Show the number of parking spaces per usage. Show total number of parking spaces required. Um, all that was given was what was provided, not required. Show total number of handicap spaces required. Again, provided is all that is shown. Need at least one to be van-accessible with an eight-foot aisle instead of five-foot. Truncated domes are required as per ADA requirements. Show detail of truncated domes. Um, need to be shown on the site plan. Um, minimum of clear, three feet of clear width excluding vehicle overhang must be provided. Minimum of clear, three feet of clear width excluding vehicle overhang must be provided as an accessible circulation route. Therefore, sidewalk must either be five feet wide or have wheel blocks between the handicap access point and the doorway. It's not clear on the plans what the width of the sidewalk is there around the building. Frontage landscaping is required in accordance with chapter 56. Need a landscape plan that shows the details of the landscaped areas, including type, size, and location of plants. There's some clarification that needs to be done for the areas that are shown in white, what's going to be happening there. Minimum width of drive for two-way traffic is 24 foot. It doesn't show if the drives are two-way or if they're one-way. Then minimum width of a drive for one-way traffic is 15 feet. Maximum width of drive exclusive of radie is 40 feet. Need to know what the width of the drive is. There are some assumptions made by me on there. Street lights are required at each intersection along the street at intervals of 300 to 350 feet is measured along the center line of the street. Show location of the state plan coordinates for each street light. Street light fixtures shall be a certain model. Show size and location of all freestanding signs. Show distances from street right-of-way. More standard comments. Lighting plan is required, displaying at least one-foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. And then, commercial design, design standard comments. Where a facade faces adjacent residential uses or an area of comprehensive land use plan designated for residential use using earth and berm shall be installed, no less than six foot in height, containing at a minimum a double row of evergreen or deciduous trees planted at 15-foot interval, plus all landscaper requirements set forth in chapter 56. Internal pedestrian walkways shall connect focal points of pedestrian activity, shall feature landscaped areas along no less than 50% of their length. Internal pedestrian walkways must be distinguishable from driving surfaces through the use of low-maintenance surface materials such as pavers, bricks, or corded concrete. A five-foot wide sidewalk along the full length of the building along any side that features a customer entrance is required. This sidewalk shall be setback from the building foundation at least six feet to provide areas of foundation landscape. The six-foot setback is shown, but again, did not find the area of the width of the sidewalk. The six-foot setback is missing in several areas around the south side of the complex and a few of the, what I call pods. Foundation landscaping is required. Provide an area to accommodate a possible future land, public transit stop. Entryway landscaping is required per Springdale Commercial Design Standards. Exterior ground-mounted or building-mounted equipment, including but not limited to mechanical equipment, utilities, and banks of meters shall be screened from public view with landscaping or with architectural treatment compatible with the building architecture. All rooftop equipment shall be screened from public view with an architectural treatment that is compatible with the building architecture. Need a unified lighting plan as per Springdale Commercial Design Standards. Sign design materials and placement should complement the overall architectural design of the building. And then the last one is, is we need an updated current conditions page to show the topography of what has been taken out of the area.
You didn't indicate in the set of plans that you submitted what variances and stuff you applied for last time and weren't granted. And we're looking at this as it's a whole new submission because it's more than two years old. So we've got lots of comments.
Okay, you know, again, you know, it was approved two years ago with the same guideline. So I guess we'll table and come back with the supplemental that.
Okay. I think that'll be best for all of us.
We'll table the large scale.
Okay.
We'll move on to R2304, Sam's Real Estate Business Trust, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. It's just a small piece that was added to the development to the south and to the west recently. And currently that portion, the south and west portion is MF24. We're just trying to include this piece as MF24.
Staff comments?
The land use plan indicates this is the southwest overlay district. The rezoning is in keeping with the following goals recommended for approval. Larger multifamily developments should be located on sites with adequate space or off-street parking, accessory structures, and recreational activity toward the edge of single-family residential areas where higher traffic generation, taller building heights can be, that are accommodated.
And we did a reflat, so this goes in with that other lot with the reflat, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Comments from the audience? Please state your name and address.
I'm Dr. Joe P. Rouse, MD. My family physician. My current office is at 1306 South Pleasant here in Springdale. I own the two acres north of the property between the Andys and the Shelter Insurance Company. I have an egress-ingress problem. I'm pretty close to Interstate 49 on 412 there. It is very difficult most of the time to make a left-hand turn out of my property. And I've been attempting to work with the Sam's Regitors. And Mr. Roy Covert was helpful the other day and gave us a name. And we tried to get permission and, to get a easement. When Sage started developing this property a number of years ago, they had a road which was touching my property on the southwest side by 25 feet. And he promised me another 25 feet verbal for easement. That did not happen. The road is over further, as everybody that goes to Sam's Club knows. I've asked for access, easement on the southwest corner, but anywhere along that line would be wonderful. The original discussion, I'm told, with the planners of the Sam's Club was that the Sam's Place Street, Sam's Club Place, which is a street that goes to Gene George where there's a stoplight, was to be deeded over to the city when it was completed. I don't think the city owns that deed yet and has not exercised that. The extensions of Sam's Club Place, that street, across the entire property would potentially give me access. I simply am asking you to table this until that street is completed and deeded to the city. Ms. Elizabeth Johnson, who is the executive for, she's a senior manager for Sam's Club Real Estate Operations, said to me, or actually to Bob Downham, my regitor, the reason she would not consider access, Mr. Covert, was this is due to traffic. I do not think the Sam's Club has a traffic problem.
Okay, let me explain, that's not an issue to discuss with this rezoning. And we've been through this issue before. The city is not in a position to require them to make an access to this property to the now, to the north. They can do all of their improvements on their property and not provide access, but that really has no bearing on this rezoning either. So that issue, the city attorneys already discussed with Mr. Downham. And we discussed it at planning commission meeting and city council meeting last time. So it has no bearing on this rezoning request. Okay?
Any other comments from the audience to the commission? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Cloud.
Excuse me. Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Refused.
Passed at six zero, one refused.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 24th.
Moving on to public hearing conditional use. C2301, Donald and Karen White, Vocal Trust, presented by Alan Reed and Associates.
Would it be possible to push this down? Alan is on his way here. If it can't, that's fine, but I'd like to request that if possible.
Well, you want to just table it to the end of the meeting?
I think he should probably be here in 30 minutes, if that's okay. Or however you'd like to do it.
You guys have a problem with doing that?
We'll just move it to the end.
Thank you.
Write that down real quick. Move on to C2303, Harbor Church of Northwest Arkansas, presented by Steve Williams, Chad Longing, and Nancy Bunch.
Good evening, I'm Chad Longing. I'm the pastor of Harbor Church of Northwest Arkansas. And we are just here tonight asking permission to use the space at 986 Elmwood Street for our church services.
Staff comments?
The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable. The off-street parking and loading is acceptable with a signed agreement from Mathias Properties indicating that the entire parking lot will be available for the church use on Sundays. And that's the only day that you will have services there.
The only day we'll have services, correct?
Okay, now you may have meetings during the week.
Yes.
But you don't anticipate needing that entire lot?
No, ma'am.
Now, let me tell you, if it becomes a problem in that you're using more of that space during the day and conflicts with the other uses in that area, the conditional use can be reviewed and can be revoked if there is a problem.
Okay, that's understandable.
Okay, the refuges and service areas are acceptable. The utilities are acceptable. Screening is acceptable. The sign, are you proposing a separate sign, sign on the building? We don't know because it's not shown on the sign.
We may have our own sign on the building above the doors, but that's the only signage we'll have.
No freestanding signs? Okay, the yard requirements are not applicable. It is acceptable with the adjacent properties, provided that the parking agreement is honored. And we also need to make sure that building inspection and fire department has signed off on it. We don't have that sign-off sheet. Have y'all been out there to look at it? Yep. Somebody needs to address that, if there's any of those issues.
I haven't been out there. I've been in conversations with Steve Williams, who's the construction manager for Mathias Properties. They are in the, they have submitted a rough plan in which we have discussed what needs to be done. They will do this as soon as the conditional use is approved. Again, they don't want to draw a permit and start working to the conditional use.
That's what we were told. We just need to make sure that gets covered.
They need to beef up a couple of walls and add some bathrooms.
Okay, and then the other issue is the noise ordinance. You have to comply with the noise ordinance. And you think that's unusual for us to say for a church?
No.
We have had situations where the music is loud enough that it bothers the adjacent property owners. Okay, that's it.
Any comments from the audience to the commission? Be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Who wants it? Mr. Covert? Mr. Austin? Well, you, who got it?
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passed at seven zero.
Goes to council.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the 24th.
Okay.
Move on to large-scale developments. L2260 Calderon Landscaping. With the variances of B2310, variance for paving requirement, B2311, commercial design standards, and waiver, W2302, waiver of street improvement, improvements, presented by Justin Jorgensen.
Yeah, good evening, I'm Blake Jorgensen, on the company with my brother. He was tied up tonight. But we also have John Starren, the architect, here as well. And so we're here to answer any questions you may have, and we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Staff comments?
So in addition to standard large-scale development comments, the list of variance and waiver requests on the cover sheet needs to be updated. All drives and parking areas are required to be paved, in which a variance has been requested. A landscaping note needs to be updated to reflect city approval for adjusted plans. And specifically for commercial design standards, no more than 60% of the off-street parking area for the entire property can be located between the front facade, within the front yard of the principal building, and the primary abutting street, in which a variance has been requested. Foundation landscaping is required. Applicant proposes foundation landscaping on the east side of the office, between the sidewalk and customer entrance. A variance has been requested for the remaining sides of office and all sides of proposed storage building. Provide at least two of the items listed under central feature and community spaces in the Springdale Commercial Design Standard, in which a variance has been requested. We need elevations for the proposed storage building. The southwest proposed storage building on the plans. Provide a drawing of the trash enclosure screening method, eight feet and opaque. And screening for the rear and side property lines is required as adjacent uses are residential and a variance has been requested.
Engineering comments. I'm not sure if the variance for the public transit stop ended up making it on the agenda. I don't think that that would be needed. We just request that an area in the right-of-way is called out on the plans for a future stop in the event that Ozark Regional Transit adds a route. No improvements are required. I also don't recommend placing the mulch storage so close to the existing drainage way. I would like a little bit more detail on what that enclosure looks like. Is that a building? Is that open storage? Is it covered? There's a lot of water that comes through there, and I think it's just a little bit close to that drainage way. That's all, thanks.
Comments from the audience? To the commission? Call for the vote?
I got a couple of questions first. On the landscaping, they're asking for the variance for the landscaping. Are you providing the same amount of landscaping as required on the site for foundation landscaping and all that, just in other locations?
We are, you want me to answer? Okay, yeah, we're providing ample landscaping for the full site. They're going to screen all perimeters and the eastern front. And I will make a comment that we, the proposed building that was requested for elevations, we're not going to build that. So we won't be providing elevations for that. And as far as the mulch, we can move that storage to the west to get outside that drainage basin a little bit more. And hopefully that answers some of those questions that may have come up, but I'll let you continue.
Okay, you would think a landscaping company could landscape their site.
Yes, ma'am.
You would think that that wouldn't be a question when it comes to that. But we don't see calculations that shows that you say ample. What does ample mean?
Wait, we're meeting city code, above and beyond. As far as I can tell on the, I mean, if you, it's up in the upper, well, I'm not sure how you're looking at that with left corner.
It says one shade tree and seven trowels for 25 linear feet of frontage required, 10-foot green space required. So you've got all that on there, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you got foundation landscaping all the way around the building, but you don't have any on the backside. So where's that landscaping being picked up at?
I didn't know it needed to be required on the backside, but if we need to, we can easily do that.
Foundation landscaping says all the way around, not just the front.
Okay, no problem.
And then the existing building, you're doing no foundation landscaping around it at all. So are you adding that landscaping someplace else on the site? What I'm asking you is, can you give us a chart that shows what would be required and which are actually providing so that we get an equal amount of landscape?
Yes, ma'am, 100%.
Okay, and if that proposed building's not going to be built, then it needs to come off of this drawing?
We will.
Okay, because as long as it's proposed, we need to know what it's going to look like.
It will not be, it'll be removed from the drawings. And when we update the landscape plan, it'll make sure to include that omission and the supplemental landscaping that needs to be required.
Okay, and then the request by engineering to provide a location for a transit pull-off, but not necessarily a transit stop itself. Are you looking for that in the existing driveway or somewhere else?
Typically, we just request that an area in the right-of-way close to the drive is just boxed out on the plans and shown future transit stop.
Yeah, okay.
And we agree with that, no problem.
And that's the widening after 112 is being widened? Have you all had any discussions with the highway department of what the highway department's going to do when they come through there?
No, ma'am, I have not. We just have reflected upon the plans that they, the concept plans they've got.
Okay, but you did use that as your guide for putting this on.
Yes, ma'am. We have accounted that for in the right-of-way section so that we don't encroach inside any improvements they may make.
Okay, and then you have all your parking in the front. You've got a big enough site. Cannot some of that parking be moved to the backside instead of in the front? Okay, and then you have all your parking in the front, you've got a big enough site, cannot some of that parking be moved to the backside instead of in the front?
Yes ma'am, that's, it's true, it could, I think the idea is that customers are in the front, and the fencing and screening for the employees is all in the back.
Okay, and they're all going to be parked on that paved area, you're not parking on the grass, you're not parking on gravel. Are you asking for the areas that has the little dots on it to be gravel, or is that going to not be paved?
That's going to be gravel.
So the only paved parking is for customers, there's no paved parking for your employees anywhere?
John, you may, I mean, I'm not as familiar as John is, but I believe that...
So the parking requirements that we went by ended up exceeding what the business owner felt like he needed, so yes, if you look at the three spaces on the bottom portion of the plan that are paved, the idea is that his staff, employees that were there would park there. His guys that have the trucks mostly drive those trucks home, so they're coming, they're speeding toward their home, they're coming here, picking up their goods, and then going out for the day.
Okay, are you asking for this proposed gravel to remain gravel forever, or for a two-year period, or is your variance to waive it completely and it always stay gravel?
Our variance request is to waive it completely and stay gravel, I will say that our plan, longer term, is to eventually add on to the building as shown. We pulled that off of the plan because of the existing water infrastructure was not such that we could support the fire hydrant, and it got into some issues with the fire situation, and so that's why we removed that. At a certain point, once the Highway 112 improvements are done, we will be coming back to you guys, you know, five years or whatever it is, with a proposed addition to that rear building, and at that time, we understand that that will need to be paved.
Okay, so would you do a bill of assurance for the proposed gravel for a three-year period or something like that?
I'm not sure that three years would give us a long enough period based on the Highway 112 and the water line infrastructure, getting all that in place.
Well, it was my understanding that the 112 project is moving faster than what we all thought, because this is the first section of the 112 improvements they're doing.
The owner is more than happy to, and in fact, when we thought that there was a large enough line to be able to support a fire hydrant, they were more than happy to do the addition and do the paving all at once right now. The issue is upgrading the entire line, since that's going to be likely part of the 112 expansion.
Okay, so could we do a bill of assurance for two years, and then if highway department hasn't done anything in two years, you come back and have it extended?
Oh yeah, absolutely, that'd be fine.
Okay, so the paving requirements would be with a two-year bill of assurance?
Is there a waiver for the parking requirement or no?
The waiver for the parking requirement is that more than 60% is in front of the building. The number of spaces is based on the size of the house being in office, and it's one space per 300 square feet, and that's how you calculated you needed that many spaces, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and if you, I'm not sure if you can pan.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Now, total building, 7.7 spaces required, one ADA space required, and you're actually doing nine, including two ADA spaces, so you're not asking for a variance for the number of parking spaces, just the location of all of them in front of the building?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, what about the trash collection and screening of it? Do you have a dumpster location on here?
We at a point had a dumpster location, I'm not sure.
It is just, it's a, if you look at, if you were to go outside the gate and do west, it's at that western point, and so...
But you're just, you're going to screen it, right?
That's correct, it will be screened.
So you just need to add that to the plan?
Yeah.
So we're not doing a waiver of the screening for that?
And it may, does it say? Does it screen? Does it say? Okay, yeah, and we called out that it's going to be screened, but we didn't provide elevations of it when we can.
So D, E, and F are actually going away? Because you're going to show us that you're providing the same amount of landscaping, just in different locations?
Yes ma'am.
You're going to screen the outdoor storage, and you don't have any loading areas, you're going to move the mulch storage? Okay, so what we have is the central features and community spaces, you're going to put in a transit pull-off. You're going to identify that. Okay, the pedestrian flow, is you going to have access to the sidewalk? Is that what we're talking about? Somebody tell me if that's what I'm talking about? Pedestrian flow? Yes, okay, and you're not, and you're proposing not to connect it to the sidewalk that's going to be on 112?
We will, once it gets installed.
Okay.
That's kind of why we stopped at the improvement areas that we felt the highway department was going to make, and so it'll be an easy, quick connection, and
Okay.
they may even make it for us, hopefully.
Okay, so we may need to, you may need to bond for that, because we want to know what it is, okay, so that one can go away. The only one we have left is the parking lot orientation, with it having more than 60% parking in front of the building. That should be the only variance we have left, and then the variance for the paving requirements with the two-year bill of assurance, okay? Oh, central features, you got to put a bike rack, and, you know, 112 is being designed with a side path all the way down it, so a bike rack might be something easy to put in, can you add a back rack?
Yeah, yes ma'am, no problem, I can do that.
Central features, we got a bike rack? Looks like we're designing at the table, right?
Straightforward, we're going to the parking lot orientation.
Yeah, all we have left is parking lot orientation, the bill of assurance for two years on the paving. Are we good? Somebody tell me if I missed one, is that it?
That's a waiver.
I'm sorry?
The waiver of the street.
Waiver of the street, yeah, we got to have the waiver of the street, yeah. I wasn't, I wasn't including that with the variances, I was just getting the variances all together.
Do we have a lighting, do we have a lighting plan of the parking lot? Have y'all done a lighting plan on that?
Yeah, I think we have a lighting plan. Yeah, yeah, we do have a lighting plan. Okay, so let's do the variances first.
You want to do B 2310 and 2311A together? Okay, that'll be a call for the vote. Call for Mr. Parker.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Variance passes 7-0.
Okay, the waiver of street improvements is not to do any street improvements on Highway 112 because of the pending work to be done by the highway department, are you donating the right-of-way, the additional right-of-way that's needed?
Yes ma'am, any right-of-way that's needed will be donated.
Okay.
That'll be a call for the vote, no, it'd be a motion forward to council for approval.
Right, to grant the waiver with the donation of the right-of-way.
What she says. Anybody?
Call for the vote as stated.
It's a motion.
Motion of Mr. Parker.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Mueller.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Waiver passes 7-0. Now we'll move on to the large scale. This will be a motion subject to staff comments. Anybody?
Motion?
Motion for Mr. Parker.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Mueller.
Cardell? Cloud?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Large scale passes 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to L 2302 Hillcrest Village, ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Here tonight, the owners requested slight modification to the plan, there's a piece of sidewalk on the east side of the pond that we're requesting to eliminate. The sidewalk's still going to have a loop around the pond, it will connect to the current sidewalk on the facility with the remainder of the plan being as approved.
Staff comments?
Okay, I got a couple of questions. The drawing that you submitted, where is that sidewalk being relocated to?
We made a connection on the southern side to the units along, I can't see that drive there, but, so there's the pond, then there's a row of units on the east side of the pond, and then there's a sidewalk that runs along the west side of that row or that alley there.
Okay, we're moving it to the road rather than along the pond where it's supposed to be?
Correct, I think the sidewalk was already there.
Okay, why did, why did we have to eliminate that sidewalk that went around the pond to start with?
The developer changed, decided to change the elevation of the unit there, we, instead of it having step downs, that unit was built flat, or at one slab elevation, and so created a great issue on the backside of the pond with, relative to that sidewalk, and so that's the reason for the request.
So it creates a situation where you walk out that, onto that pad at the back, you're at the edge of that detention pond, correct?
It's currently constructed, yes.
And before, there was a five-foot sidewalk before you got to that slope?
Correct.
So we've created a safety issue, it appears. Why keeps someone, if the water's up in that pond, from coming out of that and stumbling off into the water? With it being such, so close to those paths? I mean, is the only solution we have is to move the sidewalk and connect it to the front and leave the situation in the back? And where's the 20-foot easement around the top of the detention pond?
It's around the 20-year surface elevation, it's not around the pond top, so the 20-year water, the water surface elevation is actually not all the way up to the back doors of these units, it's significantly lower in that plan.
Can we go back to that picture, please? So you're telling me the easement goes not the full width or the full height of that slope?
My understanding is it's at the 100-year water surface elevation, is when the drainage easement starts and all the top of it.
Okay, Katie, can you, this is maybe my misunderstanding.
Jason's correct, so the drainage easement starts from the 100-year water surface elevation. With this submission, though, we did not get a grading plan so that we could confirm that that 20-foot is still there, so that's one of my comments, is to provide an updated grading plan so that we can make sure everything is still working as it's supposed to.
It just looks very suspect.
How can we approve a large scale? How, what's the order that it happened, Jason, like, how did it, how did it, you said the developer just decided to do it on one slab instead of stepped down as it was, I'm assuming it was stepped down in the approved large scale?
Correct, yes, as designed, it was stepped down.
Okay.
So it, I mean, it's higher than, the elevation was higher than what the minimum slab elevation was on the design.
And was that, was there any discussion with anyone at the city about that modification before it was done?
No.
Because in the ordinance, in Section 112-8, it says, "The development plan approved by the planning commission will be deemed to be a final plan for which minor adjustments and modifications may be granted upon request to the planning community development director. In no event may any modification to a development plan be made without prior approval by the director. Any substantial changes in the development will be in conformance with the procedures for a submission." So this appears to me like it's something that should have been discussed before we got to this point. I'm not trying to pick on you, Jason, but it's just, this is those kind of situations that's creating...
I'm here as representative of the developer, I had no...
You didn't have any?
I didn't build it, so I didn't...
They didn't call you to come and check with you either, correct?
Let's just call this what it is, poor design. There you go.
Well, with what Katie said, we can't verify that we still have that 20-foot easement, I don't know how we can approve this not knowing that it still works or that there's another solution, I mean, I for one wouldn't want to have a child that could get out that back door and go right down that hill toward the water if there was water out there, if it was me.
Jason, do you know if there's any fencing planned around the edges of the detention pond?
I don't think there is currently, I think it's, you know, it was supposed to be an amenity for the development, there's portions of the playground area that's kind of submerged in the, in that detention area, and it also is on the, it's on the western side, you can't see it in this picture. And so that's kind of the reason why there wasn't any fencing there, is because it was kind of looking at that amenity, but, I mean, I think fencing could be a potential solution, I didn't show it because I didn't know if, you know, if we put it right on the backside of those little breezeway, or the little patios, then it's only five foot wide there, so, or six or eight, whatever that number is.
I just throw it out as a possible solution to, to, you know, take care of the safety fact that Patsy raised.
Is this image the original, or is this the revised plan that we're looking at?
This is the revised what we're looking at.
The original one, they had a sidewalk going along adjacent to those apartments, correct? To give the people the ability to walk out the back of their apartment to the playground and then actually enjoy this part of the...
Right.
Yeah.
That's what was approved, and I don't remember any discussions with anybody about this change happening until it was done.
So you haven't, staff has not been able to have a discussion with the developer or about this yet?
Katie, have y'all had any discussions about, other than your comment is that we need to verify that that 20-foot easement still exists?
Yes, and I have not had any conversations with the developer at all. Spoke with ESI after an inspection to the site, and we just asked the question, is there supposed to be a sidewalk here? And I think that's kind of when the revision was submitted. And I will just comment that when we, when we do look at the building elevations next to ponds, we do set a minimum elevation just to make sure that the structure's not at risk of flooding. So, you know, like Jason said, they raised the elevation, that, you know, I guess it could be considered a minor revision, they still met the minimum, however, it, you know, kind of comes with other issues.
Jason, what are your thoughts about tabling this till the developer has a chance to meet with the city staff and talk through some of the issues they raised?
I mean, I'll still be, I'll still be back here asking for the modification, if it, you know, if it, if that conversation goes in that direction. So, I mean, I would just convert...
You might be back with the modification and some other recommendations, right? About how to address the... How to address it?
What's the timing on this subdivision? I mean, you're not going to get any CVOs until the lift station is completed and the water serving?
We're still, we're still working on the lift station, trying to get it complete, yes, we're still working on the lift station, trying to get it complete.
How far along is it?
It's been backfilled, there's a little building that has to be built that goes beside it.
Are the pumps in?
No, because the wet well's open right now, so the wet well's all the way up to grade, and it's been backfilled. The top of the wet well's still going to be put on, I mean, there's some, some time that has to occur for all of that, those pieces, I mean, they're working on it every day, but I mean, I don't know.
Do you want us to vote on the amendment or the revised estimate, or do you want to table it?
Vote estimate, please.
I'm sorry, you said vote on it?
Yes, please.
So the revised one, if you'll go back to the picture, I mean, to the drawing, this is what we're revising it to be, and then you see the picture of what the existing conditions look like.
Any comments from the audience? This is to the commission, it'd be a motion subject to staff comments?
It's a motion.
Motion for Mr. Cloud?
Second.
Second, Mr. Culver?
Cloud? Culver?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Cardell?
No.
No.
Fail seven zero. Move on to L 2304, I 49 Industrial Park Phase 3, presented by Half of Stotions.
I'm Joanne Johnson with Half, I'm here to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, we need a unified lighting plan. Re-submittal included one, but it was an interior lighting plan. We need the parking pedestrian area. Engineering comments? Sequence of construction note number three on the site plan is missing the city name. And please specify sod in the detention pond.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission? The motion subject to staff comments?
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion, Mr. Culver? Second, Mr. Cloud?
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Move on to third phase. L 2305, South 48th Street Storage, Phase 2. Presented by Bates and Associates, we also have variances for commercial design standards.
Good evening, my name is Jake Chavis with Bates and Associates. I'm here if you have any questions. I did want to point out that as I was reviewing our plans before tonight's planning commission meeting, we did not show where we were going to compensate for our foundation landscaping, but we do have every intention of doing that. I think typically we calculate it with two or three feet outside of the building edge. We take that area and we put it somewhere else on site. I believe we may try to fit it in where that water line is, just to the left of the easement. But we, we will make it happen.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, foundation landscaping is required, although a variance has been requested. And now I hear the same amount will be allocated elsewhere. Provide at least two of the items listed under central feature and community spaces. A variance has been requested for one of those central features. Phase 1 included a picnic table, but Phase 2 has no proposed community spaces. Facades over 100 feet in linear length shall incorporate wall projections and/or recesses. And roof lines shall be varied with a change in height every 100 feet, and a variance has been requested. Building facades shall include a repeating pattern with no less than three of the following. Color change, texture change, material module change, expression of architectural or structural bay through a change in plane no less than 12 inches in width, a variance has been requested. Predominant exterior building materials shall not be smooth face concrete block, tilt-up concrete panels, or prefabricated steel panels, which a variance has been requested. And increase the foot candle in the lighting plan in all the parking and pedestrian areas. Engineering comments? Temporary construction easements for work outside of the property will need to be submitted before a grading permit is issued. Please add our completion of construction standard note to the site plan. That's all.
So this has one access through the project itself? There's no secondary access into this facility, even though you own a strip of property that goes over to whatever that street is?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, we just wanted one, one access. We were trying to view it as a extension of that Phase 1 project.
So how many RV parking spaces do you have?
Honestly, I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to, have to count them.
Several.
Seventy?
Several.
Oh, several.
I didn't count them either, but there's a lot down through there.
Yes, a lot of them.
That's a lot of additional traffic putting on that access from that one access point just off of 48th Street.
Right, so, you know, we've done a lot of storage units around this area in northwest Arkansas. Most of our clients say that, that at, at the most, at one time, they have between four and five people in, in their entire complex at a time.
And is there a restriction that those units cannot be used for anything but RV parking?
That's, that's the intention, is to have RV parking, but I don't know how.
I didn't ask what the intention was, I said, is there a way to make it, it's not a 16-foot tall stack full of all kinds of stuff? Are the buildings to be sprinkled?
Yes, they are going to be sprinkled.
Okay. A lot of hints back there.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, state your name and address, please.
My name is Neil Picken, and my residence address or my business address? The business address is here in Springdale, 5131 Central Drive. It is currently a dead end. And that is an issue here.
So you're that business that's just adjacent to this, to the, to the south, at the end of Central Drive where it ends now?
Yes, I am, I am direct, I will be directly south of the proposed storage area. And if you look up at the chart up there, you'll see a little pink area up there. And that looks like an ingress and egress to their property. I just have some concern about the West Central Drive making a turn going down to their property that may or may not encroach upon 5131 West Central Drive.
They're not proposing to open up a drive there at all.
I'm sorry, how will they get in and out of their property?
They're coming through, that was my question, they're coming through the entire storage project to get to the back of that. All the way out of 48th Street, coming in and through, all the way through it to get back to that. They don't, they're not proposing a second access point there.
I, I would like to have a clarifying statement or so to the Washington County parcel that was sent to me.
Well, they still own that piece of property, they're not, they're not developing it as an access point.
Alright.
At least what we see here does it showing it as an access point.
Thank you, ma'am. But, but they recently surveyed that and noted the gas line and the other utility line going adjacent to Central Drive. And also, in so doing that, they surveyed into my property and placed flags on my property. And it appears that they are having some sort of intention of coming in that property at that point.
Are you bringing utilities in from that point?
No, the, the utilities are not, there's no gas or utilities active at this time.
Is there a utility easement across your property?
Yeah, well, I've, I've had the property since 2000 and 2001, and...
But is, in your record, does it show a utility easement across your property along that drive, Central Drive?
I have a survey here when I purchased the property, does it show any utilities going across the property?
You could switch over to our utility plan. I think I thought I saw it in there earlier. So it, it looks like all of our utilities are coming in from the south as an extension of what we have done for Phase 1.
Okay, it does show that there's a water line along Central there, and there may be a utility easement.
There is a water line going from that area, too.
And it's probably got a 20-foot utility, it looks like there's a notation and the number's too small for me to read on there what that utility easement is. But they're not accessing any of that in front of your property, is what we're being told.
So I can rest assured that the traffic going down Central Drive will end at their property?
They're not making any provisions for traffic to continue with this project off of the end of Central Drive.
And in fact, we're, where that little strip of land is at the end of that drive, we're proposing like a 10 or 15-foot retaining wall there, so there will be no drive ever through our property there.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the audience?
Here's my card.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, the buildings that you're putting back here will have, they will be metal buildings only?
Yes, ma'am.
Both ends, the sides will have doors, no breaks in the roof line, nothing. How long is this building?
Fairly long.
Well, I can figure that part out.
I think the, kind of the idea that we had is that since there is that retaining wall there, there's, there's sufficient screening all the way around the property. There's not any kind of access or driveways going through there that nobody will ever really see it.
What's the, the height of the screening wall?
It's standard, whatever y'all require, and then our retaining wall is higher than that. I think it's six foot, is that what y'all require? Yeah.
Katie, did you see a design for that retaining wall on that side? And you've already commented on it, it has to be structurally designed, and does it have to have a rail on the top? Because of the height of it or anything like that?
If that's the case, we can, yeah, we can add one, if we have it already.
So you're cutting the site down, or is it already that low?
We're, we're cutting some of the site down.
How much?
Wherever, just, just wherever that retaining wall is, and if you go back to the plans, I can try to point it out. Yeah, so it's basically on that western, sorry, the eastern building, it's about halfway from that building all the way down to where that open space is where we're putting our fire hydrants.
Dark line that's on there on the east side is not the retaining wall, the full length?
Uh, no, ma'am, it's not, it's not the full length. I think that's a fire, that's where they were showing our curb. But the retaining wall is right, right behind or at the curb line.
Katie, you're comfortable with the retaining wall as it shown? So the variances is for structure back and sides to have all metal, no breaks in the roof line or the building itself. No detail features, the roof is the same, the material colors are the same. The landscaping, you will be adding additional landscaping to meet the requirement?
Yes, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna take where we would normally have foundation landscaping and take two or three feet outside of the building, calculate that area, and put that area somewhere else on site.
Okay. So really, that landscaping variance goes away? And then the screening is the retaining wall that you're doing, or the wall you're doing on the east side because of the residents that's here?
That's just the way it worked out, to be honest with you.
Okay. And then we have the other, the rest of the comments that are left.
To the commission, you know, do the variances?
What is the zoning, general zoning around this property? Patty, do you know, does anybody know? Is it C2I?
It's all agricultural to the east and it's C2 to the west. Now, we just rezoned property to the north of this to MF 24. So that's not on here either, I just remembered that.
That's a lot of metal building to be looking at.
It's hard with these, with these buildings, because they're always going to be, they're always going to be in conflict with the commercial design standards until we come up with some specific storage structures, so, I feel like...
Especially with all the garage doors, it makes it tough.
I feel like we've tried when we can, when they're out in very visible places on 71 or other places, to try to encourage that, you know, when we can, but...
But we, we have, we...
And storage building is a...
We have had a storage facility do add brick to the ends.
Do you want the material is on the existing buildings on Phase 1?
So, yeah, the majority of it that you can see right there is, is brick, and I think it is brick on the ends. I'd have to double-check on the actual, the buildings back behind, but I know for a fact, the, the large building in front is all brick.
And all the way down Central Drive?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Will they be willing to break the end caps on these long buildings?
I'll go ahead and say, yeah, he's, he'll be willing to do that.
Yeah, there's not much you can do there.
Okay, so the variances would be agreed to do end caps on the buildings, so the rest of it would be all metal. No breaks in the roof line on the sides, no detail features, materials and colors as presented. Landscaping comes off of that and screening. I think we need to leave that there until we know for sure that all of the residential areas are still, are being screened.
Sorry?
We need to see that all the residential areas are being screened, where your retaining wall covers all of that.
Okay.
And I, I can't answer that with looking at this size of it, so. So those would be the variances that are left.
Leaving screening on there. Okay.
Leaving screening as in, they're not requesting a variance to the screening, they're going to meet that through the...
They're going to leave the variance there, and we're going to say that it has to meet at least the minimum requirement. Do we have any other comments, or we get everything else? Okay.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? This will be a call for the vote for the variances, if we want to take them all together. Call for vote, Mr. Culver.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Variance is past seven zero. Large scale. Any comments from the audience on the large scale? Through the commission, this will be a motion subject to staff comments?
Sub motion.
Motion, Mr. Cloud?
Second.
Second, Mr. Culver?
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to L 2306, push plastic expansion with a waiver of sidewalk requirement, presented by Justin Jorgensen.
Good evening again, Blake Jorgensen. Apologize if my brother could not be here tonight, but I am happy to answer any questions y'all may have. I think this one's fairly straightforward, but hopefully, if y'all have any questions, I can answer them for you. So thanks a lot.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, please ensure that all the adjacent property owners listed on your certified lists are displayed on pages two through four of the plan set. In addition to the ownership, ownership address and parcel numbers of adjacent properties, please include the zoning for each of those properties. That needs to be reflected on page two. And a lighting plan is required, displaying at least one foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas, and it doesn't appear that a lighting plan was provided. Our only comment would be to bring the street up to current city standards for which a waiver has been requested.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, this will go with the waiver, be a motion to recommend, to approve or deny, either way, whichever way you want to go to the council.
I think a motion to recommend for approval to city council, forward to city council with approval, with the recommendation to approve.
You got it. Motion by Mr. Parker?
Second.
Second, Ms. Mueller?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Waiver passes seven zero. Going to the large scale, this will be motion subject to staff comments?
I'll make a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion, Mr. Parker?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cardio?
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven zero. We'll move on to L twenty-three oh-seven, reliable poultry parking lot expansion, uh, presented by James Gertz with a variance for paving requirement, a waiver for street improvements, and a waiver for master street plan, road dedication on Monitor Road.
Uh, good evening, my name is James Gertz with the EDA, we're bringing this project before you. If I can answer any questions, I will, thank you.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, all drives, parking areas and storage areas are required to be paved, in which a variance has been requested. The developer is required to dedicate right-of-way of an abutting street in conformance with the City of Springdale Master Street Plan. A separate dedication document shall be submitted to the city for filing. A waiver has been requested. And per the master street plan, there's a north-south major collector connection from East Emma Avenue to Monitor Road in which a waiver has been requested. Engineering comments, please call out concrete to the right-of-way line on the proposed commercial driveway apron and then update the detail, I think you just got an old one in there. Um, no grading permit is required for phase one. Um, and for a little background on the waiver for master street plan, we have a proposed collector street in the master street plan that is left over from before Huntsville Avenue and Butterfield Coach was improved, um, and so the engineering department does support the waiver of right-of-way dedication for that street.
With the idea that the master street plan will be amended and not be taken off?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Comments from the audience? To the commission?
Yeah, they're, they're storing equipment and stuff on there. It's not really parking as much as it is the equipment storage?
Correct.
Yeah.
And the waivers are only, or the variance is only for the northern areas with the gravel. The proposed parking on the south side is to be paved.
But those two have been there a while.
Okay, we'll do the variance first for the paving requirement. Be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Parker.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Uh, Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Variance passes seven zero. Move on to the waiver for street improvements on Monitor Road and waiver for the master street plan, road dedication on Monitor Road. Also be a call for the vote.
No, this is a.
No, I'm sorry, it is a motion, subject staff comments.
Recommendations is.
I'm sorry.
Council to waive it?
I'm getting old. We'll do this as a recommend, a motion to recommend to council for approval or deny.
I'll make a motion to forward to city council, uh, recommendation for approval.
Now, is this on both of them? Or are we taking them one at a time?
Both of them.
Thank you so much.
Right. Motion, Mr. Parker.
Oh, second, Mr. Parker.
Second, Mr. Cloud.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
All right, waiver, both waivers pass seven zero. We'll move, okay, the large scale is, is a motion, subject staff comments.
Motion, subject staff comments?
Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Uh, move on to L twenty-three oh-eight, MT NWA Dance Studio with a variance for commercial design standards, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. One thing to note, it was submitted as a dance studio, it's no longer a dance studio, just a commercial, uh, office warehouse building. This is at the end of Worth Lane, um, and I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Um, besides standard comments, let me see. We have for commercial design standards, predominant exterior building materials shall be of high-quality materials, including without limitation the following: brick, native stone, natural stone, synthetic stone, concrete masonry units, smooth face units with integral color, synthetic stucco, EFS architectural precast concrete, decorative face concrete, tilt-up panels, glass, wood, natural or composite, variance has been requested. Predominant exterior building materials shall not be smooth face concrete block, tilt-up concrete panels or prefabricated steel panels, variance has been requested.
Okay, we had a question, um, whether Worth Lane will be overlaid just due to, um, the, the age of it and some of the construction causing damage over time. It is a private street, that would be to the owners. Um, please show sidewalk and street lights, um, if any are proposed, we didn't see any on the plans.
Ed, do you have a comment?
No, it's just a change in use, and so the, you can't go over twelve feet on your storage heights, cause you don't have the sprinklers.
And once this is approved, it can't become a, a dance studio?
No, we understand.
Okay, even though it is still owned by Northwest Arkansas Dance?
No, it's not owned by Northwest Arkansas Dance.
It is or isn't?
Is not.
Okay.
It's owned by MT NWA LLC.
Okay, this, this thing was kind of confusing, cause we switched in the middle.
We switched it after our, after our meeting and our discussions.
Okay, so it will, it will be a trades and services type building like all the rest of them?
Yes.
With the design that's shown on here?
Correct.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission? We'll do the variance first.
So the materials and color that you presented, what's, what's the actual variance?
It's architectural metal panel, um.
All of it?
All of it, yes.
Nothing but different kinds of panels turned different directions and different colors?
Different colors, yes.
Right. Okay.
Do you have a call for the vote on the variances? On the variance?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell? Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Variance passes seven zero. Large scale, motion subject staff comments?
Motion subject staff comments?
Motion, Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by, Mr. Austin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, move on to L twenty-three oh-nine, Central Junior High Revised, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple, again. Um, so revision, uh, for Central Junior High, coming off the southwest corner of the parking lot, making a new connection to New Emma Proposed. We had a slight modification of the drainage, um, to make this connection, so we're asking for this revision to be approved.
Staff comments?
I think this is a great connection, help take some of that traffic off of.
For planning besides normal standard comments, it's if plans are approved and once conditions met, please integrate this plan set into the original L twenty-two oh-four plan set.
In the drainage report, the weird, or sorry, in the plans, the weird detail shows feet instead of inches on some of the measurements, please revise. Within the drainage report, the pond summary does not appear to match the weird detail shown in the plan sets. I'd like some clarification there. And then the driveway is shown as phase three, is there a phase two, or is that just a mistake? What is phase one and two?
So phase one is the south half of the building that they're building today.
Gotcha.
And then, once that opens, they're gonna move people out of the current phase or the current facility, tear down some of that, remodel the north half of existing central.
Okay, so phase one and two are more just construction phases?
Just for that, yeah, and then phase three will be here. I think the idea is that they're gonna build a drive with this phase two, or the phase one, and get it, get it complete, but we wanted it to be a separate phase so that we can kind of work it in.
Okay, understood. And then just the final comment of that, um, additional permits will be required for the construction of the driveway when that phase develops.
Jason, do they anticipate having that driveway open when the school opens back up with the new buildings on the back?
That's the plan.
Okay, and is that, when, when's it supposed to open? I don't remember. Not by this fall?
Fully, fully open or the first?
The phase?
So, fully open is like two, two years December, I think, so two years from now. Um, and I think this first phase is, they were trying to do spring break of twenty-four.
Oh, okay, not by the time school starts this fall?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, this will be a motion subject staff comments.
Motion, subjects to staff comments?
Motion, Ms. Mueller?
Second.
Second by, Mr. Cloud.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Next is L twenty-three ten, Williams Tractor Revised, presented by Barry Puckett.
Yes ma'am, I was notified by your office last week that, uh, my list of adjacent property owners did not match your office's list, so I'd request that we table, so that I can ensure that we've notified the correct list of owners. I think you had two listed that I did not have listed.
We don't have a receipt that you sent out any notices. Did you send out notices?
Yes ma'am.
Did you provide the white, certified mail things to us?
No ma'am, I did not.
Okay, so we couldn't hear it anyway. Um, there is a couple of issues that we need to make sure we address. The bond that you have posted needs to be reissued, because we're not gonna get this to the planning commission in time for that bond, so you need to reissue it, and it needs to be through a current, you know, it's a company that's no longer working on site?
Uh, they have worked on site in the previous month, yes ma'am.
Okay, well, we need the bond extended for the same amount before, and, and are we trying to get a C of O of the, of the second building before the planning commission hears this revised?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I, I have to point out again that, once a development plan is approved, there needs to be revisions approved through staff as we do them, not after they're already done, cause there's some changes on here that, um, nobody's talked about, including some changes to the detention pond, some changes in landscaping. Uh, are you applying for a variance? Are you providing the same amount of landscaping all over the site that would be required? And I know you don't wanna put trees along or any kind of landscaping along forty-nine. Are you adding additional landscaping? And if you are, that needs to show that, or that, and you need to apply for variance?
We're, we're not requesting a variance. Uh, the amount of landscaping, the number of shrubs and number of trees required and approved on the previous drawings was installed before the bond was submitted to your office previously.
I don't think so, because the bond still covers landscaping. So there's some landscaping that wasn't done because the bond, in the bond document itself.
There was a count moved, but it is on site, yes ma'am.
Okay, we need to sit down and talk about all this and get through all this. You also have an area that's supposed to be grass, and it has red dirt on it now, and you told me the other day you were going, growing grass on red dirt, hadn't happened yet. Are you gonna put some tops full down?
I told you we were going to hydroseed, yes ma'am.
On top of red dirt?
Yes ma'am, I also told you that the owner's designing another building that he's going to submit for that area, but we are hydroseeding that area.
Okay, then we need, that needs to be shown on here, cause that's not what that's shown, and if there's a proposed building in there, we need to know some timeframes with that. Okay, so this thing will be tabled and we'll go through all this. We probably need to schedule a meeting before the next planning commission meeting, so we can get all this stuff worked out, but that bond needs to be reissued before it expires.
Yes.
Chairman, just a quick question before we move on, C twenty-three oh-one beginning where it's gonna be pushed out, do we know if they've shown up yet for C twenty-three oh-one? Can we go ahead and hear that, Rev, and push that again?
Okay, we'll go ahead and move that to now.
Which one is that?
It's the.
C twenty-three oh-one, Donald, Karen, White.
Oh, the, uh, tandem lot split?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do C twenty-three oh-one, Donald, Karen, White, revocable trust, presented by Alan Reed and Associates.
Uh, good evening, thank you very much for letting us wait in line and present this to you. It was just a real jam-packed evening tonight. The plot we are presenting in front of you is a slight revision of a tandem lot split which was approved last fall by this body. There was a little confusion probably on our part on what was being approved, and there was, uh, some concerns, rightfully so, by the planning department regarding what was going on on the east side of this property where it adjoins the storage unit. So, we wanted to address these things and talk to our client, bring it back through, try to resolve some of these issues. Uh, the first issue was a, a short, um, access easement at the northwest corner. Uh, it's shown in yellow on this slide, says originally approved access easement. We had decided just to eliminate that easement altogether. The only easement that we will need and utilize is the one along the east side of the property, which joins the storage units. There was some concern about that easement. It was sixty feet wide, it was centered on the existing roadway. The easement, it didn't, uh, cause any harmful effects to my client, but the man that owns the property to the east, he had some improvements inside that easement, um, and he was concerned, rightfully so, that if he has improvements inside an easement, who's gonna be responsible, who's going to be, you know, just, it wasn't clear as to what was gonna happen to those improvements. So, we have adjusted that easement. We leave the highway at sixty feet, we go back to the southwest corner of the storage unit, and then we narrow down to a thirty-foot easement, which completely eliminates any of his improvements inside that easement. So now he has complete control over his improvements. There's no, no longer is the fence inside it, no longer is his septic inside it, and he has more than twenty-five feet from this building corner to the easement for parking purposes. So, we kind of feel like we've got a better plan now. That thirty-foot strip of easement will be, um, would require pavement normally, cause it's a tandem lot, but I believe the client, uh, has decided to post a, uh, a bond in the amount of one point five times the cost, and I think she has spoken with the planning department about that. And I think that pretty much clears up the small changes to what was already approved.
And the bond is so that once you can get it paved, she'll have it paved and we'll release the bond, correct?
Exactly, yes.
It's just that you can't get anybody to pave right now, there's, there's just nobody who has time for it, so. Do we have any other issues left? So that covers everything?
No.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission? This will be a.
This will be a recommendation of council for approval of the conditional use. Or I guess it's a call for the vote?
It's call for the vote, it says right here, call for the vote.
Yeah, I guess so. It does have some technical issues that have to be addressed, but we'll do a call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution, it goes to council on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go back. We're gonna start order of adjustments. B twenty-three oh-one, Mark and Shelley Johnstone, variance for increased speed and spins height, three to six feet, presented by Mark and Shelley Johnstone.
Good evening, uh, so.
Good evening. Uh, so would we, uh, my name is Mark Johnstone. I'm sixteen-twenty Lancaster Drive, the property in question. So, um, we learned during this process that we actually have three front yards, and we put a fence across one of them. We just want a variance to make that six foot instead of three. We think the property looks better the way it is.
Staff comments?
Uh, like we have any comments? There may be adjacent property owners who want to comment.
Any comments from the audience? I guess we'll go to the commission. This will be a call for the vote. You got it, Mr. Parker?
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is B twenty-three oh two, Florina Fisco Pedroza, presented by Florina Fisco Pedroza.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jose Fisco. I'll be speaking and translating for my mom, Florina Fisco. We both live at seventeen fifteen Theodore Drive. And...
Staff, go ahead.
We are requesting to have a front porch on our driveway. That way we can protect our cars from the bad weather such as hail and stuff.
So are you just talking about a canopy put, to put over it or an actual garage?
It'll be like an open porch, front porch.
It will be open on both, on all three sides? Will it attach to the house?
Yeah, it will be attached to the house, yes.
Okay, and then it will be pole set down each side and have a cover put over the top?
Uh, could you repeat, repeat that again? Sorry.
It's going to have poles or some kind of post put down the sides along the driveway and then a roof put on top?
Yes.
Okay, what's it gonna be made out of?
Wood. It'll be made out of wood. The, the posts will be made out of wood. Post will be, uh, six by six.
Okay, six by six posts. And then will it have shingles or a metal roof?
Shingles.
Okay. Ed, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, and, and the depth is going to be nineteen feet. Is that how long you're gonna make it? And then how far is it from the edge of that to the, edge of the strip? So you're going from thirty to, to twenty feet? So that... I'm not sure the dimensions all work out. Do they?
From thirty to twenty, they're pushing out nineteen foot? I mean, if there aren't no car there already, that's about nineteen foot long, right?
Looking at this drawing here, it's a nineteen-foot carport that's gonna be coming off of that house. I'm not sure how much space you have there, whether you would still have another twenty feet before you hit the street. How far is it from the street to the house?
Ronnie, did you go look at it today?
Yes, ma'am. I'm trying to remember. I, I believe this is one that I measured when they first turned all of this in, but...
It shows fifty-five. I see a five there. I see a nine, yeah. Lots of room there, though.
I'm trying to, if I remember correctly, to the, to the street, there was, to the, the road, I believe there was fifty-five.
It says fifty-five on there, yeah.
There, there was a pretty good distance. Picture of it is...
The, the picture's deceiving. Yeah, the, the, the picture is deceiving. So what you're asking for is for it to be the front setback reduced from thirty feet to twenty feet so that carport would not extend beyond whatever it would get to that twenty feet. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And whether that's nineteen feet or not, it depends on how it all measures out.
Yes.
Okay, so it would be a reduction of the front setback from thirty to twenty for that carport structure right there. And then that, they'll have to come get a permit for it, right, Ed? And then building inspection can help them make sure that it fits what they...
Does the building inspection go out there? I know you guys normally don't go before they start, but would it be possible to maybe go out there before they get that thing constructed?
We, at a footing inspection, we would do a check to make sure they did, they had the setbacks.
Any comments from the audience?
I just want to, can you hear me? I just want to be clear. So you will attach to the, to the roof?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I just want to be clear that they were gonna attach to the roof, that's all. Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
Yes, thank you.
We, we understand. She understands what we're talking about.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we'll go to the commission. This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Covert?
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, so y'all need to get with the building department and get a building permit, and they'll work with you to make sure we get it in the right place.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you all. Next is twenty-three oh four, Jorge and Letitia Bravo. I hope I said that right. Presented by Hor, or, or is it George? Is it George or Jorge?
Jorge.
Jorge.
Hello, my name's Ramondo Bravo. I'll be translating for my father, Jorge Bravo.
Staff comments?
Okay, tell us what you want to do.
We are building a porch in the backyard, and, uh, till last minute, we, we went to go get a permit for it, thinking that we might need one, and when we went to go check it and inspector went out. If I remember correctly, they said that we were five feet too close to the house. It needs to be five feet away from the house. I mean, from the fence. I can't remember.
Okay, Ed, can you address this one? Because we don't have any drawings or anything. We don't know what, what you're... Is it the full width of the house or is it part of it or?
It's part of it. It's like about the same length as a pathway right there in the back of the house.
Ed, do y'all, do you have any?
Obviously, if we went out there, there's a permit for it. I, I asked, I didn't say so. But anyway, um, obviously it was, our inspector went out there and, on a foundation check, and they were too close. So too close by seven and a half feet.
So they were told to kind of apply for, we really need you all to send us that information so we know what we're talking about when we get here.
Well, they need to send it to me, too.
Okay. Kind of puts us all in the dark here when we don't know what we got. So do, do we need to table this and come back after you had a chance to look at it, or do you feel comfortable with it as it is?
The distance from where your building is to the fence is, um, twelve and a half feet?
I believe so. Give me a minute.
If you're, if you're, if you're comfortable with it, we're comfortable with it, we'll just double check and if not, like, is it?
Okay, yeah, because I do remember, ever come...
Okay, so it won't be any closer than twelve and a half feet? Everybody's good with that? Okay?
About so.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Cloud.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
All right, passes seven zero.
You need to get with the building inspection department to verify it.
Next is twenty-three oh five, Jesus Rojo, presented by Griselda Navarez.
Hello. Uh, my name is Griselda Navarez, and I'm representing, uh, my sister and brother-in-law.
Are they here with you?
They're not. They're out of the country at the moment.
Okay, do you have written authorization to represent them? Well, I know.
Well, it should be in all their paperwork that they turned in.
Okay, hold on a second. Let me make sure. Sarah says yes. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And they're just requesting permission to expand their driveway.
Katie, you want to talk about this, expanding it toward the front door? Does it exceed the requirements?
So I'm not sure that, um, we've seen an application for this one. Did you guys submit an application?
He submitted everything, and he gave me copies of it.
Okay, it might have been one that Chris did without me. I'm so sorry. Um, so typically the ordinance does not allow for expanding your driveway towards the front door. You have to go on the opposite side. So, um, if, if Chris did it and, I'm so sorry, I didn't... Um, okay. So, okay, so if, um, this variance were to pass, we would double check all of the areas to make sure it would not exceed the forty percent of the front yard. It looks like there's some calculations up there that have been done, so we can double check those. Um, and we wouldn't allow them to pour the, um, the new driveway until it met all those requirements.
Three foot off the side?
Three foot off the property line, less than forty percent of the front yard, and typically only the opposite side from the front door. So they're just asking to expand towards the front door. They want to do, sorry, they want to do both sides instead of just all of it on one side.
Okay, so can they do that eight-foot, whatever that is, seven-foot, and then a sidewalk? Is a sidewalk there now?
There is a sidewalk.
You're just expanding it, looks like?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just an expanded sidewalk.
With all the rain pouring recently and all the water, there has been water damage to the door, the front entrance. So they're trying to expand that in order to get the water away from the house.
Okay, so engineering would have to verify that it's not, does not exceed forty percent.
Yeah, the only thing I think this one would have an issue with would be that forty percent. Typically, um, we can compromise on that if it's a little bit, um, too much, and it's not a problem. This would just be asking that they could do that, that seven-foot expansion on the right side of the current driveway. Typically, we allow expanded sidewalks without, you know, this variance, as long as they're not parking cars on it.
So y'all good with engineering? We're working with engineering to get this one done.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote? Call for Mr., Mr. Parker?
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Compton, uh, Cloud?
Yes.
Sorry.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Next is B twenty-three oh seven, Adam and He- Heather Hawkins, presented by Adam and Heather Hawkins.
I am Adam Hawkins, and I am trying to get my rear setback set from twenty feet to ten feet.
Staff comments?
So you're increasing your deck?
I'm actually trying to add the shed that's on the bottom right.
Okay, the deck is not...
It exists.
Okay, and so you're putting a twelve by fourteen, ten foot from the rear property line and...
I think it's five, is what they said.
Okay, we, to go to five, you have to have a variance on that, too.
Okay.
Because it has to be eight, otherwise. Eight-foot sides.
Can I apply for that now as well?
Well, we didn't advertise for the side.
Okay.
We only advertised for the rear. Can you move it over three more feet?
I mean, I could technically, yes. Three more feet would take, it might be too close then, because there's a little jet on the back of my house.
Then you have to come back and ask for a side because we only publish for a rear.
Okay. Fair enough.
Go ahead and do this.
This is the rear from twenty to ten.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote?
Wait, wait, wait. Steve's got a comment.
No, just, just want to make it clear, just as in the last one, Ed, just kind of briefly, fire department doesn't support the side rear setbacks. This will be a call for the vote. Call for Mr. Parker?
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Uh, B twenty-three oh eight, Springdale Airport Ha- East Hangar, presented by Greg Thomas Garver.
Hello, my name is Greg Thomas with Garver. Um, this is just for the access road along the east side of the airport. Um, we are proposing a twenty-foot width access drive, um, so that's less than the twenty-four-foot requirement, and that's what we're seeking a variance for.
On the original large scale, for we had, weren't there supposed to be a temporary access easement? And now you want it to be a permanent access easement at twenty feet, not twenty-four? That's what you're asking, right?
So it's gonna, yes, I'm asking for a permanent twenty-foot access drive, correct?
Okay, what does building and fire have to, to say about a permanent twenty-foot access easement across there?
It beats the fire code. It's the twenty-four is for two-way traffic, and it's up to you guys to determine whether it'd be the sufficient traffic that you would need the twenty-four feet.
And you're agreeing two access points?
Uh, there's, there's gonna be one access point at the south that's shown, I guess, on the left side of the page now. The northern one will be built as we progress towards the north in phases. So that could be five, ten years.
So are we just talking about this, this one that goes to the hangar further south? Or are we talking about doing this for the whole access road that goes the length of two sixty-five?
They want the whole access road down through the full length.
Looking at this, this is really the first time I really got a good look at it. Um, it's plenty of fire access. Um, you've got a lot of parking, and then if this was not, I mean, if, if, if this is just hangers, you know, you don't need a two-way access. You may not need a two-way access. But if, as hangers tend to be, if it becomes a joint, you know, hangar, office suite type of thing, then you might need a more access.
You have to have that distance between the buildings? Is that a requirement why you have that big distance between the hangers?
Correct, yes. There's thirty feet between each hangar.
For fire code?
Yeah, for fire code.
Okay. Ben, you have a comment on this one?
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, we, we met with him in your office. I don't know if you remember that or not. We, we met with him and we talked about coming to this for one time to do a twenty-foot access versus twenty-four. We didn't tell him they would get it, but we did recommend them, to them that they come in for this. These are hangers that are on airport property, so that unlike the through-the-fence hangers that can use their hangers for other purposes, these have to be aviation-only, so there's gotta be a plane parked in it or else they can't continue their lease. So I think we were trying to clear this up once and for all, so we didn't have to come back with every hangar project and ask for this again. So really, the question is, is tw- a twenty-foot paved drive access adequate for one, two, three, four, five, six, nine hangers? And it, for fire protection, they say it is. So it's how many times you're gonna have two cars coming and going at the same time, and can they pass on a twenty-foot pavement? I think the answer is yes. I mean, we do ten-foot lanes in certain areas of town now. Usually there's parking alongside of it, so there's other access points, but I think this one is probably wide enough, but it's your call.
But you just gave us justification why we don't do this anyplace else.
That's right.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you. It's in the record why we would do this one.
Any comments from the audience?
Are these parking spaces reflective of what we require?
Sure seems like a lot.
I, I do know the airport commission is looking at some new design standards for the airport hangers themselves, and we can address parking spaces with that and may not have to have that many parking spaces. Hangers are really weird.
Yes, that is, yeah, both of those are correct. And then this, this is just a conceptual layout, so this is just what we have to go off of now. If anyone wants to come in and, and change it, that's still, that could still completely happen.
And Greg, you're working with the airport commission to review or to come up with some design standards for hangers that will help us address some of these issues.
Yes, that's correct. I met with the committee last week, so I'm actually going to be reaching out to the planning staff soon to set up that meeting.
And to confirm, these are aviation purposes only?
That is correct.
Thanks.
And the city has that control? Because they're city hangers, they're not private. Yes.
If we want any more FBA money, you know, in extended aviation use.
Okay. All that needs to be in the record, guys, so we know why we're doing this, if you guys want to approve it, okay?
Okay, this be a motion subject for staff com, no, it won't be, it'll be a call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Cordell.
I did.
Cordell.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud? Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
It passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is twenty-three oh nine, Felipe Gallegos, presented by Felipe Gallegos.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Peters, uh, this is Felipe, I'm here to translate for him. He's just looking to make his fence, his property line in the front. His neighbor on the right side and on the left side both have a fence. He's wanting to connect a fence to both of those. The requirement is three foot, he's asking for four foot. On one side, the neighbor has four foot, on the other side, the neighbor's got like three, three and a half. He's just requesting for four foot.
Staff comments?
I don't think we have any.
I was there, and the neighbor does have four feet on the corner. Is, is this going to be chain linked like the neighbors?
Uh, I think he's wanting to do a privacy fence.
Privacy fence?
Yes, sir.
Any comments from the audience?
Well, this is actually a deviation.
A deviation? That's not in my notes.
It's for the kids, he's trying to make sure, you know, they're good.
There's still be a call for vote.
Call for vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Parker.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell? Cloud? Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is B twenty-three thirteen, Carmark, presented by Bluen Associates, variance for pedestrian flow and landscaping.
Apologize, I didn't realize I was next. George DuKane with Bluen Associates. We are, we went, we presented in front of you a large-scale last month. In that process, there were some elements that we were going to have a hard time adding into our site, so we came back this month for variances. If you can go back to that previous slide, the landscaping on the north side, we're actually going to provide that, so we're not asking for variance on the north side. What we are asking for is the variance on the west side, where the garage doors and access points into the building are at. They're going to have three bays along that side, and we just thought that any kind of landscaping in that particular area with the car traffic that was going in and out of the buildings would end up possibly damaging any kind of landscaping that would be right there. So we're trying to minimize having to replace a lot, a lot of landscaping over time. The other thing, the other variance that we were asking for is the sidewalk connection from the face of the building all the way out to the public roadway. The reason we are asking for a variance for that is because we do not want to invite the public to come into this site. So what they, what they wanted to do was limit access to the site, so there's going to be private, or security fencing, or privacy fencing going all the way around. They're trying to keep the site secured so that they don't have random strangers actually walking into the site. So that is one of the reasons that they did not want to do the sidewalk connection from the face of the building to the roadway, public roadway.
Staff comments?
Where's the fence line going to be in the front?
Uh, you can already see the existing fence line, it's that line with the X on it, and it's right there, kind of along that easement line.
What kind of, what kind of fence is it going to be?
What was that?
What kind of fence?
As of right now, we are leaving the existing fence intact, and they're going to put some guardrails in place, but the rest of the fence, I think we're doing privacy fence everywhere else along the residential areas, to make sure that we're in compliance with the city standards.
Do you have additional landscaping to make up for what would be required on the west side, on the site somewhere else?
Not currently, but we could definitely provide that.
You can do that?
Yeah, we can provide that.
So that would eliminate the landscaping requirement, variance, if you put additional landscaping on the site.
Somewhere else?
Yes, okay?
Okay.
So that's what we'll do.
That'll work. We did not know that was an option.
So you'll have to revise the site plan before you can move forward?
Yeah.
And show us, and give us that calculation, too.
Sure, well, I mean, we'll just show you what the landscaping on that side of the building would have been, and then show what, you know, that we moved it somewhere else.
Right. Okay.
So did I hear, we, we, what was the reason we're, we're not connecting the sidewalk to the, we're not connecting this to the sidewalk because of security?
Yeah, security, we don't want, uh, this is going to be employees only, uh, this is not accessible to the public. What they're going to be doing here is cleaning cars, getting them ready for sale. So they didn't want, uh, they just don't want members of the public being able to walk in.
That's what it's being used for now?
Well, that is what it's going to be used for.
For how, forever?
Um.
We don't know forever, right?
While this particular, uh.
While they own it.
Yeah, while they have it, yes.
I just don't, I just don't know that that's a good enough reason to scrap accessibility. I'm with you on the landscaping.
I mean, you could put it along the drive, so that employees could get out to, yeah.
We, we ask everybody to do that. And lots of businesses that are not really open to customers have to do that.
So if we eliminate the landscaping one, you'll put it in other places? The only one we have left is the pedestrian flow.
Pass, is there an option for them to bond that, to put it, in other words, just paper would not install it, it's a paper, the city would have to do, it should better become, you know, the city goes through, they're going to put the sidewalk in, at least they would not pay for that.
Well, that, that's not, the city, the sidewalk's already there, it's the connection from the building to the sidewalk. That's not something we let somebody bond for, because we don't want to go back, unless they intend to do it, you know, they can't get it done by the time they get the C of O.
The city typically wouldn't be in the interest of providing access across a private property. There is a sidewalk along Butterfield Coach currently.
It's the connection from the building to the sidewalk is what we're trying to get. So bonding, I don't think is an option. Yep.
But if it's a place to wash cars, it could very reasonably be a car lot in five, ten years.
Not without changing the zoning of the property. And then that would actually, you know, bring other compliance issues into, into measure.
You need a call for vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for Mr. Parker.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Tyler?
Yes. Passes six one.
Thank you.
Next is D twenty-three fifteen, flying, flying the coop hangar expansion. Variance for pedestrian flow, central features, community spaces, materials, colors, landscaping, presented by ESI. Also, we have a waiver of street improvements.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. This is a non-large scale. Basically, the intent is to connect the two hangers. Kind of a small piece of building there. We are going to look at some access changes to the site, uh, for vehicular access. Believe we have a site plan and some elevations presented. And so I was involved with conversations, uh, staff, but we are requesting these variances.
Staff comments?
They're taking the existing building that had some, did it have some tornado damage?
Yes.
Okay, and they're putting it back, they're connecting the two together. The materials is the issue on the backside, and along that, again, this being airport hangar type, it really doesn't fit into the whole thing that design standards for airports fit into it.
I, I think as far as the materials go, you know, we're trying to, I mean, obviously, those are pretty mature trees that they've got shown there. On the, the hunt hangar, which is the southern hangar, currently, that has a few windows, it's got a little like festival thing that they're going to take off, and they're basically going to make it, um, one panel, um, or no windows, pre-sheated. And then have the aesthetic piece on the, the north, north building.
With the masonry on that one building, it probably has more than any other hangar on that strip anyway.
Why no sidewalk?
I think the request is a waiver of the sidewalk along four tw, or one tw, two-sixty-five, sorry.
Why? Because we've had other pieces of it built along through there. Could we do payments in lieu of improved, of sidewalks so that it could be done when and if something's done to two-sixty-five? Is that acceptable?
I would, uh, I mean, I, I prefer to act on the waiver as, as presented.
Okay, it has to go to council anyway.
Right, yeah.
Has to go to council. So planning commission can recommend payment in lieu of improvements for the sidewalk waiver, then council has to decide what to do with it. And the pedestrian flow, they don't want any sidewalk from the front entrance out to, well, if they're not putting a sidewalk, that's why they don't want any sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of hand in hand, so, you know, obviously, we're.
All those new hangers that we just looked at a minute ago, they're going to have a sidewalk there? It look like it?
Uh, they have an access, I believe. Yep. And then central features and community spaces? Can you put it back right there or something like that?
I don't know, it's, it's really not a commercial use, it's a hangar, uh, I mean.
It's a private hangar at that.
I don't know how, I mean, it's kind of blurring the lines with the commercial design standards, in my opinion, but.
The, the commercial design standards is an issue with hangers all the way around, so. Hopefully, the airport commission will come up with some commercial design standards for hangers that work better. They're putting this little design feature in the front to put the, the address on, and they're creating that design feature on the property to the, to the south, it'll have the same kind of tiles, it's a design piece on there to put the numbers on.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, the, the last one that I talked about, those hangers were on airport property. These hangers are through-the-fence hangers, which means that they're not subject to the same requirements of the FAA, so they can be used for whatever they want to be used for, but they also have access through the fence into airport property, so keep that in mind.
And this one has a meeting room and other things in it, it's not just hangar space, it's got some meeting rooms and other things like that in it, too.
So what's the landscape, is there any, are you not doing any landscape, or are you trying to do it close to the building?
Do we have that planned? I think there was a plan presented.
Is there a calculation to show what would be required and what's being provided, so that we know?
So, I, I'm sure you've seen, around the George properties, they like to use like a white rock.
Yeah.
Landscape that's going to be here, um, without plantings. And so that's, that's the real ask, I believe, is, is, we're still going to have the buffer, it's just going to be a white rock look, uh, with no tr, no plantings in, along those, along those areas. We are planting some trees back.
So you can see that they're putting new trees in that cluster there, right behind that wall in front of the, the hut, and then they're putting some around the corner on the other side, they're adding some landscaping on the east side in front of their existing one, so they're adding landscaping. I just don't know that it comes up to the total amount of what it would be.
If you look at the top left, or even the, the center picture, on, in front of the, the hunt hangar, which is the large hangar, currently, all that's concrete. And so we're going to remove all of that grass and then add trees, we're just not putting that landscaping, foundation landscaping, if you will, on the building.
And you'll see there's some landscaping in front of the, where the tie between the two are, there's some trees put in there, some of their trees on the other side, too. So there is some landscaping that's come with it.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission? How do you want to handle this?
I would like to propose that, um, that we take, uh, B, C, and D together and do A, and then A by itself and waiver by itself.
Is that agreeable?
So you're going to do A by itself and the other three together, correct?
For the, for the variances.
For the variances, right, okay.
That's great.
Gotcha.
So we'll start with A. There'd be a call for the vote on pedestrian flow.
Call for the vote?
Call for vote, Mr. Covert.
Cloud? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Covert?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Cordell?
Yes.
So it's five to two, no.
Five, two, no, does not pass. Next is the B, B, C, and D.
Call for the vote?
Call for vote, Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell? Cloud?
Yes.
It passes seven zero. Move on to the waiver of street improvements. Be a recommendation to the council to approve, or approve or deny, or whatever else we want to recommend.
I would like to, I would like to forward it with a recommendation to, uh, that they bond for it, or that we deny it.
Payment in lieu of?
Payment in lieu of.
Payment in lieu of?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a motion.
Motion by Mr. Parker.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell? Cloud? Covert?
Yes.
Passes, passes seven zero.
The variance that was denied, you have the right to appeal, to the city council, it should be filed within fifteen days, you have to notify the adjacent property owners, you have to say why you think the planning commission's decision was an error.
Just a question, clarification, so we have a recommendation for paying lieu sidewalk, but we need to provide a sidewalk to this right away?
From the entrance to the, to the sidewalk. Pedestrian flow is a connection from the pedestrian entrance out to the public sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay.
But that's the variance that we did not get, so we need to provide that?
Right.
So to the right away?
But you can either provide it, or you can appeal that decision to, to the city council.
Okay.
The idea being that there's.
That's true, but it is somewhat confusing, yes.
That, that, I just want to clarify, I just want to make sure, okay, thank you. I just, I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to make sure, I said, okay, thank you.
Waivers.
Okay, waivers, we're doing-
Twenty-three oh-four.
Twenty-three oh-four, Lionheart Enterprises LLC, presented by Efren Garcia.
Hi, good evening. So Efren actually left ill, but, uh, my name is Renee, can't even speak today, huh? I'm, I'm actually the owner of Lionheart Enterprises, um, we're requesting to, um, waive the sidewalk. Both neighbors do not have any sidewalk, as you can see in the pictures, and, um, uh, on the, what's it called, the north side, next to the sign over there, there's kind of like a little, what would it be called, kind of where the water, water wave goes through there, um, so that's another reason why we, we don't wanna mess with that, um. Also, another thing was the, there's a light pole there, and then there's also a, uh, a water box meter, so we also didn't wanna mess with that either, but the biggest reason was, since the other two houses didn't have any as well. Excuse me. Losing, losing my voice.
Staff comments?
Does that support, support waiver of sidewalks? Would you be willing to make payment in lieu of improvement, and when and if sidewalks is built down through that area, street improvement's done, that's when the, the sidewalk would be done?
Excuse me, can I repeat a question?
Make payment in lieu of, calculate the distance of what it would be required, and the engineering department has a standard cost, you make that payment to the city, it's deposited into an escrow account when improvements are done on that street to build the rest of the sidewalk, that money would be used. Are you willing to do that?
Um, we would prefer to stick to, uh, just waiving it completely.
Okay.
Any comments from the audience?
Mark? Mark?
This is a recommendation to council.
Oh, thank you.
All right, this will be a recommendation to council.
So we need a motion, how you wanna make it?
Thank you, sir.
Motion to recommend to council as stated.
For a waiver or payment in lieu?
Forgive me, for a waiver.
Okay.
Is there any sidewalk on the street at all?
No, sir, so, um, I'm sorry.
Well, the, my answer to that is, we never get sidewalk built if we don't start sometime.
I agree, I'm just-
Yeah.
I have, I have a motion to recommend to council, forward to council, a recommendation to approve the waiver. Do I have a second?
You do have a second.
Second to Mr. Parker.
Parker?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Okay.
Passes seven-zero.
Staff will prepare, the recommendation goes to council on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
So, we got a planning director's report?
Um, the city council adopted the downtown master plan, so we're ready to start moving forward with some implementation efforts, we should have the first draft of the amendments to the form-based code that allows us to start implementation ready, in the middle of March, I mean, the middle of January, and hopefully have those for the work session, so we can talk about those in January. Council approved all the rezonings that were submitted, the conditional uses, the replat, the final plats, and the waivers as recommended. Uh, they appointed new members to the Housing Authority Board and the Northwest Arkansas Regional Airport Authority, and they approved the amendment to the ordinance that allows for street names, numbers, reviews, and assignments to be done through the IT Department, not planning anymore. Uh, work session would be January the seventeenth. I'm not sure where we have it, may have it at the museum like we had in the past. Um, we need to talk about drainage issues, one of the things that we talked about, we need to discuss that a little further, our accommodations of land use plan and master, street plan updates, and the possible changes to the form-based code. And, uh, just to let everybody know, this is Roy's last meeting, we appreciate all your time and effort over the years, and I want you to be a stranger, come back and sit on that side of the table if you want to and see what's going on. Council will, uh, will be, uh, taking action on the mayor's recommenda- recommended, uh, replacement at council meeting on the twenty-fourth. Uh, James Davis submitted his resignation, uh, he's taken a new job and didn't feel like he could provide adequate time to this position, so we are interviewing, be interviewing some potential candidates, and the mayor will be bringing forth a recommendation for that as well, so.
I'd like to thank Roy, cause he was one of the ones that welcomed me and helped me along when I first started, you, you did a great job here with us, and I really appreciate it.
And we will do election of officers at the next meeting, because we'll have at least one more of our new members, I talked to Ernest about our February work session, we would do a, uh, kind of a, a training session for new, and a refresher of planning commission duties and how things work, because we'll have two more new members and go over that stuff and go over the, the, um, code of ethics and that kind of stuff, so that's fresh in everybody's mind, so keep that in mind for February.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn now.